The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now called the session. Today is Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
Our quiet allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation from God to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Reverend?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the wisdom and knowledge and understanding that you have blessed our leaders with. We pray for further direction. We declare your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker?
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz?
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
Yes, I'd like to pull item 3E, please. I have a conflict of interest due to close proximity of living in that area.
Okay, we'll address that at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to presentations. Item 1.1, update of the St. Louis Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors activities by Riverbank Board Representative. Michelle, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. A couple of updates for you. We have passed our balanced budget without increasing the assessment this year, so that's gotta be nice for our community members. Additionally, we are, we've started the contract for services with Oakdale Fire Protection District and Oakdale City, and that is saving our district about $250,000 additional dollars than what we were already seeing with the contract for management services. So with that savings, we have also increased services to our area by putting a third firefighter at one of the stations that had previously only had two firefighters. So we're really proud to be increasing those services. Additionally, our, we've been meeting regularly with particularly the finance committee to go over policies and bringing them more up to date. Some of them date back to '97, '99. So we're looking at bringing those up to date and looking at all of our professional services to make sure that we are within reasonable ballparks of what we should have for our district. So if there are any additional operational questions, the chief is here tonight to answer specific operational things, but if you have questions about policies or meetings, I can answer those for you.
I just have still the same concern about having three firefighters on an engine. Since we need four to go into a building, that would require two trucks at any time to go there. And we have three going on to an EMT call for the most time. Again, that appears to be a little excessive. What is the percentage of your calls, EMT versus structural fires?
Operational questions, I'm going to defer to the chief.
That's an operational question, okay.
Yes, it sure is.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening, mayor. Members of the council, thank you for having us here this evening. About 70 percent of our calls are emergency medical service calls and, but we still have to prepare for the structure fires, just like the structure fire we had downtown Riverbank. The fact that we did lose a couple of buildings, we were able to save some of the surrounding structures, and I think that that shows as far as our staffing levels go, that three-person engine companies are pretty important. I think the two-in-two-out rule that you referred to as far as the number of people that needed, that need to be on the scene to make a interior fire attack, that's true, but with a three-person company, we use our battalion chief, gets there quickly, and then that settles our two-in-two-out rule. And so we could still make an interior fire attack, two people in and two people out with a three-person company. The other thing that I've explained in the past is that really, to be functional on the fire ground, we need to be able to assemble about 16 people on the fire scene in about eight minutes. In order to do that, you know, the fire stations are just way too spread out to do that with two-person companies. So if you go to three-person companies, then we can accomplish that goal with five fire stations. If we go to two-person companies, then, you know, it would, to do math quickly, it'd take eight fire stations to do that. So that really is the driver as far as staffing levels. Remember, something else to take in consideration is that when, now when we do CPR, we have a new way of doing CPR where we, we do very rapid chest compressions, and we stay on scene with the patient, and we administer a bunch of drugs and defibrillations, and it really goes through our staffing pretty quick, to the point where now when we do CPR, a lot of times we'll even request not only the two people on the ambulance and the three people on the fire engine, but even a second company to come in because of the time and energy it takes to resuscitate somebody that's in cardiac arrest. So, you know, a lot of communities have four-person companies. I think the suburban nature of our community, a three-person company is adequate for what we do and how we do it. A two-person company is a little challenging. I know the model's a little different in the city of Oakdale where they have two fire stations that are really close together, and so they get away with two-and-two. I think when we add a second fire station here, we may start with a two-and-two company. I know on our other corridor, which is, you know, the 132 corridor, we have major, major commercial. And in order to attack a commercial fire, we even need additional firefighters, so it's really important for us to maintain the three-person companies, you know, in the city of Empire, the one at the airport, and the one at the fruit yard. And, you know, our big tax base there as far as the gallows and the Beard Industrial Park, actually, you know, they generate enough tax dollars to actually pay for those three-person companies over there. So it's a good debate, mayor, whether or not we should have two-person, three people, or four people on a fire engine. Of course, you know, the union would like to see four people on a fire engine. I think, again, that would be excessive, and I know some policymakers think that two is enough. But again, from a fire chief's perspective, I think that in a suburban fire model, that three works extremely well.
Are you happy with the Oakdale contract?
Yeah, so far, it's went extremely well. I, you know, the firefighters have integrated extremely well. We're now at the point where working in, you know, all fire stations, all firefighters can work in all fire stations and drive all the equipment. We haven't had any major hiccups at all. I think that it's real positive. And again, the reason that that was so important is a five-station fire department, which we were, is just inefficient. When you look at, you know, battalion chiefs and a fire chief, and to pay for those resources to only cover five, you increase it to eight, you spread out those overhead costs among eight fire stations versus five, it just becomes a lot more efficient. The other thing with the consolidation or the contract for services is that my board was very clear when we went down this path that there would be no subsidies. And so everything that we did in putting this contract together was to ensure that the Oakdales had to pay their own way for fire protection. And so we're keeping a close eye on that. I'm definitely keeping a close eye on that because I was given very stern words from my board to make sure that that doesn't occur, that we protect the folks, you know, that we protect the funds that are coming from our taxpayers. So that's extremely important to us. And as I mentioned, there will be a second fire station in Riverbank. We've been waiting for a study for way too long. Actually, the person that was doing the study actually went out on medical leave, and so now we're trying to get somebody else to pick it up. And we're trying to identify exactly where that fire station should be from a response time perspective and from a growth perspective. So where you're growing, and so we're putting money away for that right now. And again, we may start with two-and-two, but, you know, the idea would, we would get to three-and-three at some point. So we're excited about that. That's definitely our next fire station will be in the city of Riverbank as far as the next fire station where we add a new station with new personnel.
We may have some suggestions for you.
And, you know, we would definitely work with the city, with the city manager and the council to make sure that we put that fire station in the right place. You definitely are one of our biggest customers, and we want to work hard to make sure that we provide the type of service levels that you expect.
Any others? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. There was that one item that we'll probably talk about another time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Second item, 1.2, update on the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Exposition.
Yes, mayor, members of the city council, Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, is here with Chris Ricky, our event consultant, who will provide an update on how things are coming for the Cheese and Wine Exposition that will be held on October 11th and 12th next month.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna just introduce Chris Ricky. With Chris Ricky Presents, he's been working extremely hard on the festival. We're feeling really excited and good about it. It's just, what, a little bit less than three weeks away, and Chris will let you know how we're doing.
Thanks, Sue. Mayor, council, Chris Ricky, Chris Ricky Presents. I'm excited to give you guys a report on the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival. We've been doing a lot of work together. I've been working really closely with your staff. Some of the stuff we've been doing, merchant notifications. We have visited 90 percent of the merchants and gotten signatures from them, letting them know, notifying them about street closures, that kind of thing, and the response has been overwhelmingly positive, so that's really great. Entertainment-wise, we're looking good. We've got three stages booked with music for both days. Wine tasting, again, looking great. We've got a dozen wineries booked for both days. We've changed the sessions from three sessions that are short to one long session. Our goal here is to discourage binge drinking and promote more enjoyment of the wine and cheese tasting experience. On the cheese tasting side, most of our changes are in the presentation of the cheese. We're gonna be having smaller portions and more exotic varieties. We will have cheese, beer, and wine available for sale on the street. Obviously, the most important component of this festival is the cheese. And this year, our, each of our food vendors is required to feature a cheese item. So some of those items, we're trying to get them to be creative, but some of the ones that we've heard of so far, there will be liquid pizza available, cheese made, and then more traditional stuff like Philly cheese steaks, that kind of stuff. We also will be selling blocks of cheese at our Coke booth, so you'll be able to get like a hunk of cheddar, or a block of Swiss string cheese, that kind of stuff, or you can get a plate of variety of cheeses. We will also have the usual variety of beer, but in addition, this year, we will have some craft beers available for sale on the street. You also will be able to buy glasses of wine. Most of the wine we'll have for sale on the street will be kind of of the family variety, smaller wineries, that kind of stuff. Marketing-wise, I brought with me this year's poster. We'll have these up all around Riverbank by the end of next week, and I've also brought with me the radio spots we'll be running, so I'll run those real quick.
The Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival presents Cheese, 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 Cheese. The Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival, October 11th to 12th, downtown Riverbank. Admission is free. The cheese is delicious. Visit us at riverbankcheeseandwine.org or on Facebook.
Then we have one more.
The Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival presents Cheese IQ. When I cannot think, it's 'cause I am thinking of cheese, which is always so. Is there any joy to be found in the wide world that's not melted cheese? Every time I think, I cannot continue. I remember cheese. I do not need love. I do not need riches, for I shall have cheese. Blue ear lingers still, fragrant pigment of my mind. We must meet again. Sweet milk, lost culture, misunderstood. Get on my wheat's web. The Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival, October 11th to 12th, in downtown Riverbank. Admission is free. The cheese is delicious. Visit us at riverbankcheeseandwine.org or on Facebook.
So those are our radio ads, and what I really wanted to try to do is change the focus from kind of like alcohol to more family-friendly cheese, you know, 'cause everybody loves cheese. Who doesn't love cheese? And we've got the ability, and we've got plenty of local dairies that are making cheeses to support this, so we're feeling really good about it. Last thing I want to talk about, and I guess I have a very busy schedule tonight, is budgets. That's probably the most important part. Vendor-wise, on our vendor income side, we're currently at $35,000 in income. We forecast that we'll have between $40,000 and $50,000 in revenue for the vendor side for this year. This is equal to, will be equal to, or slightly lower than our original forecast of $50,000 for vendors. On the sponsor side, last time I reported, you guys, we were at $9,000. We're currently at $17,000. I predict we'll make our goal of $20,000. And I think that the city's done a great job in fulfilling their end of that. I'm really, really proud of their hard work on that. Beverage income, we estimate it at $20,000. It will be $20,000. Wine tasting income is currently at $3,500. We estimate that income will come in between $10,000 and $25,000. And as everyone knows, the enemy of the profits is the expenses. Our original expense estimate was $107,000. Now we're looking at expenses that will come in between $90,000 and $100,000. I think it'll be closer to the 90s side. So overall, we're really excited. I'll be a lot happier if our vendor income goes up a little bit, but I feel good about where we're going, and I think, you know, I think we'll hopefully get in the black here. We're darn close to it, so, thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Have we sent out the vendor package to all the vendors?
Yeah, we've sent out a couple hundred vendor packets, and we also contacted all the vendors from previous years via email in addition to that. We've got over 100 signed up. It's just, we need a few more.
And we have the health and safety inspection for those food vendors?
Yeah, yeah, we're working through the county. Mary Kate is handling all the health and safety, and then we're working with Consolidated on the fire end.
Do we have a map of the area?
Yeah.
Not right now. I'd like to see a map of it.
Yeah.
I know it's condensed from last year, but elongated down Third Street?
Yeah, I wanted to focus it more on the business district as opposed to in the residential. I wanted to take advantage of all the kind of, the revamp and the remodeling you guys did of downtown. It's, it's a really, the area you have out here on Third and Santa Fe is just, it's fantastic, and this festival has the ability to showcase that, and that's why I wanted to move it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Chris, I have a question for you guys. The carnival?
Yeah.
Still in the works? Still looks good?
It's happening. It's happening. It's done. It's good. We met with him today, and they scoped out the area that he's gonna have it. We've talked to the businesses that are gonna be impacted by the carnival, and, you know, everybody's, everybody's good. The mortuary doesn't have any services planned that week. Pacific Creamery, they said that they can use their alleys instead of that driveway, so, and then Antigua can use their alley to get in their parking lot, so. And the Masonic Temple, I think it's closed that weekend, so we're, we're good.
Thank you.
All right.
Right item, 1.3, proclamation Walk to School Day, October 8th, 2014, and we have from the Riverbank Unified School District, Bianca Lopez and Lydia Jimenez. And the kids can come out, too?
They're a little shy.
Hi. What is your name? Chanelle? And your name? Good to meet you. I'm Richard. And you're?
Lydia Jimenez.
Okay, and you're the after-school coordinators?
After-school coordinator, and Lydia is representing Casa de Rio with Promotoras here in Riverbank.
Thank you. The City of Riverbank Walk to School Day proclamation, whereas the City of Riverbank holds the health and safety of its students as a chief concern, and whereas lives of hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, and whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offer an opportunity to build activities into daily routine. And whereas driving students to school by private vehicles contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, and whereas an important role for parents and the community is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trips to school each day, and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities, and now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby proclaim that Walk to School Day is October 8th, 2014, throughout the city of Riverbank, and as such, encourage everyone to promote the safety and health of children today and every day. Signed today, the City Council. And I want to thank you all for what you are doing. And would you like to take, make a comment or two?
I think really, we just want to say thank you to Darlene for bringing us to our collaborative meeting. You are all welcome to attend. We usually meet on the second week of the month. And if you're not on our listserv, we'll make sure that you are, and so thank you for doing that and bringing that to our attention, so we've been able to collaborate with the Community Resource Center and after-school programs who will lead the walks in our community, and thank you.
Thank you. And this is for the Riverbank School District, okay? If you'll present that to either Dr. Camp or whoever in your school. Do you want to say something? Do you want to say something?
Do you want to say anything about the Walk to School Day? Are you excited to walk to school?
Okay, well, it'll be fun. All right, again, thank you very much. Public comment, no action can be taken. At this time, a member of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, staff, and Mr. Mayor. I'm Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank, California. Now, a very important message here from Washington Watch. Why Congress needs to act now. With Congress back in town this month, AARP is pushing for votes to reauthorize the Older American Act, OAA, and to pass legislation that restores workplace discrimination protections for older workers. Unless there is action before lawmakers adjourn in December, these two crucial measures will be set back to score one in the legislative process when the new Congress is starting early next year. Renewal is way overdue for the Older Americans Act, which funds Meals on Wheels Transportation Program and many other vital services for vulnerable older Americans. The Protecting Older Workers Against Discrimination Act is also overdue. It's been five years since the U.S. Supreme Court set a higher standard for proof of age discrimination in the workplace than is requiring race, religion, or gender discrimination cases. I ask you, members of Congress, to support these two measures. To weigh in, you know how to call your congressmen, get their telephone numbers. Right now, I think they're in recess, but by the time they go back to Washington, then we're here and ready to speak for all of us in the name of the community that we live and those that are affected with their families. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Darryl Daniel, 3442 Algeson Street, Riverbank, and I think since we got the Cheese and Wine Festival, it's gonna be focused more in the downtown area, anything from First Street to on, starting from the highway. I think the city needs to see what they can do in the next few weeks when you have, you know, 50,000 or 100,000 people coming into our neighborhood to see what they can do to make the intersection or something close to it between Del Rio and Servol Lakers into something. I, I don't know if, whatever, I know you can't do, touch anything, you can't touch that, you can't touch that, but there might be something the city, even if it's a banner in front of the burnt, 'cause right now, the Cheese and Wine Festival is gonna start between a burnt building and a, and a closed-down, you know, boarded-up building. So, so I think it needs to, even if it has signs or banners or something like that, that's, instead of a big giant piece of plywood on the window, why don't it say, "This is Riverbank," you know, or "This is the Cheese and Wine," instead of having a big giant piece of plywood on that. Anything to make it look like it's, you know, something like that. You could make it into a function for the, what's it called, the, which group? There's different little kids, anyway, baseball, little Cub Scouts, that could probably get an honor or get a points or something like that, to do something like that. And if they, if you did find a group like that, hey, I would maybe even feed them for the weekend or something like that, for all those kids. So if they're doing something to spice up that, because my focus is gonna be is to, that the people that, when they come during that time, that they are going to be going to the Highway 108. Many years ago, they used to park on the railroad tracks, right beside the railroad tracks and things like that on Patterson Road. I remember doing the Cheese and Wine Festival. And all I heard was complaints was they had to tow everybody, they had to stop the train, which cost the train. I think it cost the city a lot of money 'cause they had to tow some of the things because the trains were delayed and something like that. So the Cheese and Wine Festival can be a wonderful thing, and it can be whatever you make of it, so I'm gonna try to make it the best that it can be. My next thing is that it is, I think anything we can do to bring a downtown business into town is extremely welcome. So that's, that's my subject there. So we do need, when you go up and down Algeson Street, we need to get some of the business owners to talk to bond, to see what their boarded-up building, if it's a saw place, or if it's a this place, or whatever place. We need to force, I don't know how you can, you know, you can't really force the property owners, but to either do something. A little bit of something is a lot, is a little bit of something, even if it's a slap-on paint in front of their building is better than nothing. So, so anyway, that's the thing there, 'cause you want Riverbank, Highway 108, you want the downtown, you want the, everything like that. You've got a lot of people that will be coming to Riverbank, and they're gonna look at one or the other. They're gonna look at what we have. Either we have a great town, or we have a ghetto town, you know, so that's what we gotta look at. So hopefully, we have a great town, all right? So, thank you. Thank you.
We don't clap here.
And settle up across the street, which is great. And then settle up across the street. So, it's a beautiful...beautiful corner. I'm Dennis Zinner, 11 Burneville here in Riverbank. So, today in the paper, I was directed to a...the Facebook page of Fox 40 News. And then the city manager reported that she said...talked about massage parlors. And she said there were some who used it as a cover for prostitution and human trafficking. So, I don't know who was there here then, but there was one, only one. It wasn't...town wasn't full of prostitutes. I don't think so, anyway. I didn't find any. And so, there's one, and the police tried to close it down, but they couldn't close it down. So, they went to legit side. They went after the massage part. And so, we have these laws now. The ordinance is just gigantic. If you've looked at it or not, to become a massage therapist, it's like there's 50 pages of qualifications, okay? So, what it did was it drove all the massage therapists out of the city. You notice there's not one around, except maybe...I think Johnson has one in his chiropractic office. So, we could have had all these beautiful spas downtown, but now we can't have any of that, right? So, then...so then the massage therapists, they spend all this money to go to school, and they have no place to practice, and they have to make money. So, what do they do? They set up their table in their bedroom at their house. And so, they have...so now we have a safety issue. We have a population that's underground that we're not controlling anymore. They have no health...health laws. They have nothing that's governing what they do. And it's just...it's just not safe. And so, this was a bad law to start with. I was against it in the beginning. And I think it's time to get rid of it. We don't need to be a big brother to the massage therapists and to the population.
Hello, I'm John Foley, 28-year resident of Riverbank. I'm back. I was here two weeks ago with a complaint. Kind of...kind of went around it, didn't bring my issue to face, but I will today. On August 28th, I went to take a shower after I took my trash out in the morning, and my water was turned off. I didn't...not know why. I called the city. They told me that my bill was not paid. I never received the bill I called. I was told that when I pay my bill, they'll turn my water back on. This was Thursday, August 28th. I talked to the people in the city hall, and they know me. And they told me, well, this is their policy. You have to pay before they'll turn your water on. I said, "I don't get any money till the first of the month. That's next Tuesday. You can't let me go for five days without flushing the toilet." They said, "Well, that's our policy." I said, "Your policy sucks. I want to talk to your supervisor." Supervisor told me the same thing. I asked to talk to the supervisor's manager, and they put me in contact with Ms. Anderson here, the city manager, who told me the same thing. "You have to pay your bill, or you're not...or we're not going to turn your water on." I said, "Seriously, you know me, and you're not going to turn my water on? I've been here 28 years. You're going to make me go five days?" And she says, "That's our policy. You know, there's a lot of deadbeats in town. Know how to work the system." I said, "Don't insult me. Don't put me in that category." I said, "You know me. I'll pay you on Tuesday. Turn my water on." She said, "No, we have to have some money." I said, "Look, I've got $20 in my pocket till Monday. I can't give you the money. I need it for gas, for work." She said, "Well, you've got to give us something, and we're not going to turn your water on." So, I came downtown, and I met with her. And she made me fill out...she filled out a piece of paper and had me sign it that I'll pay my bill in full next week. Now, I had told her that I don't want to pay the $50 fine for not paying my bill because I was unaware that I had a bill due. I was going to take it to city council. On that piece of paper that she made me sign, that I didn't read because I didn't have my glasses with me, it said that I was going to pay the $50 fine along with my bill by Wednesday. I came in the next day and paid my bill in full. I borrowed the money from somebody, came down, paid my bill. And when I went over here to pay my bill, the lady told me, "Well, the first $50 goes towards turning your water back on." I said, "Listen, lady, I don't care what you call it. I'm paying my bill in full. I'm contesting this $50 to city council." Now, you all know it. I talked to all of yous about this last month. It's been almost a month now. Nothing's happened. I paid my bill, and somebody called across the street to the city manager, and she came over with a piece of paper in her hand. She said, "Oh, you said you were going to sign. You signed this piece of paper that you were going to pay your bill in full." I said, "I did. I'm contesting that $50, just like I told you last week." She said, "If you don't pay this $50 by Wednesday, I'm going to shut your water off again." I said, "No, you won't." She said, "Yes, I will." I said, "No, you won't." She said, "Yes, I will." And she turned my water off a second time. And I paid my bill in full, along with a 10% late fee. That's uncalled for. That's high-handed. It's not in the spirit of goodwill, and it's not the kind of representation that I think this city deserves. I'm a resident here 28 years. I've been insulted by this city manager. I actually went and I asked for the city manager's job description, and they gave it to me. It says, "The City Council shall appoint city manager with an indefinite term and may remove through a three-member vote of the council." I told all three...everybody here that all I need is three people to override her for my bill. I was charged a 10% late fee, $1,360. For a $136 bill, I had to pay $113.60 penalty because this woman here decided to get some testosterone and butt heads with me. It wasn't...we're not discussing this tonight, right?
I just want you to be a little bit more civil in tone.
Okay. I've been waiting a month for some results, and I haven't heard anything. Somebody on the...up...sitting up there was supposed to put this on the agenda tonight, and it wasn't done. I don't know why. And so, I want to make sure that everybody in the City of Riverbank who's watching on television, who's here now, knows that this city manager is not doing her job. City Council...another part of her job here, this is a flow chart. This is a flow chart. It says that the city council is above the city manager. I don't know if everybody knows that, so I wanted you all to know that there's a flow chart. It shows here that her job is to provide service to the city council and lead the organization in the delivery of service to the city council. The results in the council reporting that they experienced respect and support from the staff while getting information they need to respond and be responsive to the public and make good policy. I asked you two weeks ago to do something immediately. I haven't heard anything.
Hey, thank you, Senator. Five minutes.
Well, this second part is more important. Leads the efforts to develop a healthy and productive environment that results in respect and trust in management and increased teamwork across departments, improved communication throughout the organization, and the ability to deal with internal and external customer service issues in a respectful and solution-oriented manner. That's not being done. I'm asking the city council to start to look for another city manager because I don't believe this one's fulfilling her job the way she's supposed to.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien and council members. My name is Angie Timponi. I'm a resident of Riverbank. And I'm here specifically tonight to represent the residents of the River Cove subdivision. I want to, first of all, thank the members of the council for being very active in our monthly meetings. Also, Sue from Parks and Rec and Chief Kylie, everyone has been very supportive in coming to our monthly meetings. We've had representatives at each meeting. And specifically, what I'm here to address is, as you all know, we have ongoing issues with people accessing the river from our River Cove side versus going to the river from the Jacob Myers side, specifically during the summer months, the busy months. And so, it's been a very ongoing, complex issue that we've had many discussions and meetings about. There's issues with trash and drinking and crime, just a lot of different things like that in addition to just the deterioration of the River Bank itself, which compromises our neighborhood as far as flood zones and that kind of thing. So, a lot of issues that you guys are aware of. And I'm here just to request respectfully that the council put this on the agenda and look at some solutions. Councilmember Jones Cruz was at our last meeting last week and has some great ideas as far as solutions that I think would work. She's spoken with other communities that have similar issues. And so, they're realistic things that could possibly work. We need to get on those now because it's going to take some time to investigate those and figure out what costs are involved, how we can implement those things, such as metered parking along River Cove Drive on the riverside, and then also looking at possibly resident permits, permitted parking with visitor passes. And this would be just seasonal, more than likely. We don't have issues year-round so much. It's really during the busy summer months. So, again, we'd just like to request that it become a priority for the council to really look into what solutions are best and present it back to us as the neighborhood. We do have monthly meetings, and we're more than happy to join in and do what we can to make these things happen so that by next summer, when things get busy and we have...some of you have probably seen what it looks like on a summer weekend day. There's sometimes 50, 60 cars and rafts and beer. And the sheriff's department has been wonderful. The security has been wonderful in trying to manage it as best they can and monitor it, write tickets when they can, that sort of thing. But it's just more complex than that as far as where they're parking and the neighborhood that's affected. So, we want to really look at these issues and get something in place before next summer hits. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, go to the consent calendar consisting of 3A wave readings, 3B approval of August 26, 2014, City Council. Then, before I go on, do you have any comments? Do you have any comments on tonight, the comments made?
Mayor, members of the city council, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Bermudez for bringing to our attention the Older Americans Act and for the community to be aware of that. Mr. Daniels, I think, made some good points about the Cheese and Wine Festival. It will be difficult to renovate that portion of Third Street by the festival, but he makes some very good points. It's unfortunate with the burn building and the boarded building at this point. See, there's something we might be able to do, but hopefully for next year, assuming that that's popular. And certainly agree that we want to be a great town and not a ghetto town. In regards to Dr. Zinner's comments, yes, the state did enforce significant requirements for massage parlors. The local level, we just...until just this last week, were prohibited from many regulations of massage parlors. The comments I made on the news report last night were made in a more general fashion. Riverbank, as well as other cities throughout the state, did face this. So, he does make a good point. There can be an overreaction to issues, and that's always sort of a balance that we have to deal with. In regards to Mr. Foley's comments, while I certainly appreciate his opinion and his rendition of our exchange, I would say I do have a slightly different perspective on it and would be happy to address any questions about customer service in that regard. I do think that he did actually sign an agreement, that we did communicate verbally. I communicated verbally as well as in writing. I had no reason to believe that he was not understanding the terms of our agreement. One of the things in government that we do need to do is we need to apply the rules fairly to everybody. In any...any agreement that I come with Mr. Foley, I need to be prepared to do it for anybody, regardless of whether or not they know a member of the city council or know me. And so, that's what I was endeavoring to do. Mr. Foley indicated he'd not receive his bill. He actually did receive his bill. He showed it to me later on in one of our exchanges, and so...
On that, let's not go he says, she says.
So, with that point, Mayor, you make a very good point. I just want to communicate that. There are some factors that he may not have brought out in that discussion. I would be happy to address those with members of the council or members of the public to address that. And finally, Ms. Timponi's comments from River Cove. Been very active in the community, appreciate River Cove's neighborhood involvement. They are a great model for this community in terms of how to bring together and deal with issues and looking forward to seeing how we might be able to work with them on a more permanent solution to the issues related to the river access.
Item 3B1, approval of September 9th, 2014, City Council Minutes. Item 3C, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the destruction of certain records retained by the Office of the City Clerk Election Official. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, supporting the redesignation of the Stennisloss County Recycling Market Development Zone. Item 3E, acceptance of the Oakdale and Morel Traffic Signal Project and authorization to file a notice of completion. I have one member recusing himself from item 3E. Is there any other council member wishing to pull any items? So, any member from the public wishing to pull or discuss any of them items? Yes? Which item?
Item 3E.
Okay, that'll be taken separately. Any others? Okay, from the council, bring it back for a recommendation and action on items 3A through 3D.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve in a second on the consent calendars, item 3A through 3D.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council authority member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
3E. Mr. Bermudez, what is your comments on 3E?
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, I'm Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank for 21 years now. And I've been expecting for the Oakdale and Morel Traffic Signal Project for a long time. Makes it a lot safer. But on this authorization to file a notice of completion, I have to let you know that I have discussed this part that is not completed. On the southern part of Morel and Oakdale Road is unfinished. And I demonstrated that with pictures that I had taken because there is no curb protecting the house that is right in the middle corner. And I had shown pictures, how I said that. Of course, the southeast corner and northeast corner had been there for a few years already. The northwest corner was made very good, beautiful, high curbs for protection. But the one going on Oakdale Road, south of Morel, is not completed. And they did tell me that it was completed, and I just showed them how I said that. The part going on Morel, going west from the corner of Oakdale, it is finished. It has curves on it. But that one is not. So, late, I have seen a light pole, actually, in there for the protection. I don't know who put it, if the owners got for their own protection or somebody in the city got smart about it. But it's not enough. It's not completed. So, I don't know how you say it can be authorization. When a project is not completed for a few thousand dollars more, like I say, could be protected from any issues of suing. Thank you very much.
You're talking about what corner?
The corner of the house...where the house is by itself on the southwest. Southwest corner is a house there that doesn't have the protection of the curves going to their driveway.
That property isn't owned by the city?
It doesn't matter. It's a project. It has...it's not completed. The complete project is without included, and it's not. And it doesn't matter what they told me. It still doesn't make it safe. Thank you very much.
You're accusing yourself because you are...
I live within the area. I live close proximity to that project. So, as the last...at the last city council member, I recuse myself from that item also to not vote on it because I live in that area.
Any discussion or comments on item 3E from the council or action?
I'd just like to ask him to get some clarification on that corner and what the status of it is.
Yes, as the mayor mentioned, that is property that's owned by the county, and staff has made numerous attempts to contact the county to do that portion of the sidewalk. Kathleen Cleat can provide additional details on the communications with the county.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The notice of completion is to file the project completion according to the plan specifications and the contract that was awarded to George Reed. That...the plans...it was built to the plans and specifications. That area there was not...there's no continuous sidewalk. We don't want to send anyone over to that area because there's no way for them to continue down. It is part of the county. There was a county inspector on site during the whole project, and they have accepted the project as is. They don't see at this time when development does move forward in that area. That would be the time that that area would be addressed.
Thank you. Okay, here we are again. Item 3E, action.
I'll move that we approve item 3E.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez. Council member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Jones Cruz.
I think I need to abstain from this particular item.
Council member Tucker.
Yes.
Chair, Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
At this time, I'd like to beg the council's indulgence. We have a lot of people interested in item 5.3. I'd like to bring that to the forefront. Are there any objections? I need a consensus.
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, we're going to start with item 5.3, introduction and adoption of the urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, for a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of new tattoo establishments for a period of 45 days pending study of zoning regulations that are needed to alleviate a current and actual threat to the public health, safety, and welfare.
Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, there's been a lot of communications in regards to this matter. A couple of pieces of information that have been out there have, I want to correct before we move on with the staff report that will be given by John Anderson, our contract community development director. The first is that this moratorium is being proposed because of multiple inquiries that the city received for tattoo establishments in and around the downtown area. And because our current code is silent on any regulations or criteria for use, we were concerned about the unexpected number of inquiries. As a result of that, I had a conversation with the city attorney and the police chief about what are some, what are some things that we need to consider? And out of that came a discussion about a proposed moratorium for a temporary moratorium on tattoo establishments. We are not at any time considering a ban or anything permanent. We just wanted to have a timeout essentially to be able to put forth some criteria and regulations, hopefully not too much or too hard and not too light, but something to protect the health. And the point I made earlier is that we have to have regulations that we can apply to everybody. And sadly, in government, we have to prepare for the worst case scenario because if we don't, we are generally then asked, why didn't you? And so since there can be some issues associated with these, that, not in every case, not in cases they have, but there can be, that we felt it was appropriate to propose a moratorium for the planning commissioner's commission's consideration, which they then recommended for approval to the city council. In addition to that, this discussion tonight is not about any one particular business license. It is about a proposed 45-day moratorium on tattoo establishments and piercing shops in the city of Riverbank. We do recognize, though, that there are two applications that are actually in process and that we, in consideration of the small business people that are affected by that, do want to present to you some considerations on how we might be able to impose a temporary moratorium while we do that timeout, but also consider the fact that we do have two in process right now. But again, tonight is about the city overall, a proposal that I believe is worth considering for the city overall, to take that temporary timeout to make sure that we can properly regulate tattoo establishments, including hours of operation, limits on what they might not sell, something as well as how many do we want in certain areas of town. Those decisions, we need time to work those things out. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. John Anderson again, who'll provide an overview of this issue and be happy to address any questions and comments from the council as they're raised by the public.
Thank you, Jill. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, contract community development director of the city of Riverbank. Jill's kind of giving you a pretty good overview of the issues before us tonight. Just as a bit of background, it's my understanding the city has two operating tattoo establishments in town right now, Tattoo U off of Patterson Road and then also Syncow, which is in the crossroads shopping center. We have two pending applications. One is business to be known as Soul Patch. That application was initially submitted, but then submitted again on August 26th. And another application, Syncow, who wants to relocate from their current location to the downtown core area, I believe on Santa Fe, as well as Soul Patch is on Santa Fe. And then we've had a couple other inquiries. One, I guess there's an operator that isn't necessarily applied for nor received a business license in Two Cuts Above, which is a hair cutting salon on Santa Fe. And then also Black Lotus is another operation that's made inquiries. No official applications have been filed yet. So as Jill has described, we're proposing kind of a timeout so we can establish and review what our existing ordinance codes could suggest relative to these types of uses. For the most part, our zoning code was developed in 1967, so it is fairly old and dated. It doesn't really deal with these types of land uses and historically, there hasn't been a lot of activity. And apparently now there is more activity than we've ever seen before. So we're really asking for a timeout so we can analyze the types of permit conditions that would be appropriate for these types of uses, primarily dealing with health and safety code type issues, which quite frankly, they're already having to deal with anyway, either at the local or the state level. This matter was presented to the planning commission. Planning commission did act and presented this draft ordinance to you as a package. It is an ordinance, which means it has to come back to the council for final adoption. This is a very special ordinance, which requires four fifths approval as an emergency ordinance and the city attorney can talk more about that if he so chooses. So the options that you have tonight before you is to adopt the ordinance, emergency ordinance, as presented to you and as approved by the planning commission. You can adopt the ordinance as modified or you can simply reject the ordinance and then staff would just deal with these individually through the business license process, which is what we've done in the past. We have talked internally. I know the city manager has talked with a couple of the operators that are proposing new businesses in town and we're suggesting a modification to the proposed ordinance, which would allow for certain exceptions to the applications that we currently have pending. And the exception language would be worded something like, at the direction of the city, the city may approve a business license for a tattoo establishment while this moratorium is in place if, one, the business license application was first submitted to the city prior to September 23 of 2014 and, two, the city grants a, and we initially had drafted a conditional use permit, but we think that that's two owners of a process. The reality is, we think that it could just be a staff approval or staff review, which is quite frankly, very similar to what we're doing with signs and what we're doing with second dwelling units and what we're doing with home occupation permits. So it would be an in-house review, no application. It would be a contingent review and approval before a business license is issued and then the community development department's decision, like other decisions of this sort, would be appealable to the planning commission and then ultimately to the city council if there's still some disagreement or discussion relative to that matter. So that's kind of the options in a nutshell. Again, adopt as presented, adopt as modified, as I've suggested, the language that I've read into the record tonight, or reject the emergency ordinance as presented. Are there any questions or additions, Jill or Tom? No, anyway, any questions at this point?
None at this time. We'll hear from the public. At this time, I invite the public to comment on this item 5.3. I'd like you to keep your comments to two minutes each. If you have the same information that the previous one, just say, I agree with him. What I will say is that when one person says something, I believe everybody believes it. So if we want to speak on this, please come on up. State your name, your city.
Guess I'll start off. I'm Jeremy Fennell from here in Riverbank. I own Syncow Industries and I think we can all agree that I am Riverbank Tattoos. So it kind of seems ridiculous that you would accept it how it is written because what that means is when we decided to open up a tattoo shop, there was one tattoo shop in this city and they were subpar. So we thought, hey, let's do a good thing. Let's open up one that, you know, families can go to, family friendly. We don't do anything with smoke shops. We don't do anything with, I mean, you name it, no knives, nothing that could affect the children of this community, the people of this community. We are a wholesome, family-friendly shop. Okay, when we tried to open, we had a problem. The city came to us and said, look, we got a letter written from the other tattoo shop and he says that you guys are tattooing and piercing minors. We hadn't even built the inside of the store yet. So as a reaction from the city, we were told we had six months that we were not allowed to do tattoos while we paid $3,800 a month for our lease to be in the crossroads shopping center. So what did we do? We took our punishment like any good guy would and we just said, fine, we'll find other ways to make money. And we went six months without having any tattoos to bring in money. So now we're faced with this, okay, so we want to move downtown. You all know I ran for city council. I want to be involved in the city. I'm an Eagle Scout. I love this city. I love the youth of this city. I think there's a lot of potential for this city to be great and there's a lot of potential for this city to turn into be a turd and I think it needs great leaders to make sure it doesn't do the second. So where we are is we thought, okay, look, let's find a shop downtown. Let's get this going. We can build it out. It's really cool. We already have an enforcement agency for all tattoo parlors, all tattoo shops, anyone who does tattoos. It's not at a city level, it's at a county level and they have ridiculous standards as of 2012. We follow all of their standards and have paid tons of money to retrofit our business in order to be up to code. So it seems ridiculous that we've already served four times the punishment that we would receive if this gets passed without any changes and then now have to redo another 45 days. That's kind of ridiculous.
Are you recommending that we modify the?
I believe what Jill's saying makes sense that, you know, like if it's already out there before you guys voted in, then how can you backdate it and punish those guys? From now on, if you make a rule and say, hey, look, since no one's actually being affected from here on out, if new guys want to come in, let's go ahead and take 45 days to make sure they're not involved with gangs or have drug charges or firearms charges, whatever you guys feel is this current and actual threat to public health, safety, and welfare because I am Riverbank Tattoo and I do not create an actual threat to public health, safety, and welfare. I know the other individual who's got a, submitted for his business license and I know he doesn't do it either. So we're both good and upstanding. I would champion for us. The other guys who come in, I don't know who might come in down the road. So if that's a concern for the city, it makes sense that maybe the city should say, hey, wait, we don't know who is out there other than these guys, but we know dang well that we're good people. So we've done nothing but help the city and I think if you guys are going to sign something into ordinance, it needs to be a modified version so that we're not punished for another 45 days after six months.
Thank you very much. Additional comments?
Hello. I'm Daniel Friedman. I live in Riverbank for the last 12 years. I agree with everything Jeremy said, so I don't really want to reiterate on that except for the fact of what this same thing with the, with the threat to the community as far as a health issue because I saw a lot of things in the mod B. I also saw the Fox News thing. We are heavily regulated by Stanislaus County Environmental Resources. It's not this, these infectious diseases that they talk about. It's virtually impossible. Everything we use is disposable and like Jeremy said, we have spent tons of money in order to do that. I, what I'm suggesting is the latter of what Mr. Anderson said and that is the applications that have been submitted already, approve that from here on out. As a matter of fact, I know Jeremy and myself would help you to come up with some sort of standard for an oncoming tattoo shop that wants to move into the Riverbank. I don't agree with a lot of what Mr. Hoot says, but I do agree with that as far as subpar people tattooing out of their houses and everything. That hurts my industry and that's not good and I would be against that as well. So that's about all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, to me, it's, we have a big brother issue here and I don't know why Riverbank wants to go into something like this, that, I mean, there's the Supreme Court, the state, the Ninth Court of Appeals, which I have the paper search, you want to see it, have all said that tattooing is considered art and they don't, and it's not banned. So if we're going to do, I mean, well, first of all, I don't know what gives you the authority to do this because under, under the codes, under the permits, it says code number 110-02 purpose. This chapter is enacted solely to raise revenue from municipal purposes and is not intended for regulation. So they should have gotten their permits already to start business because it's just for, it's just for revenue, it's not for regulation and you're making it into regulation thing. So that's all. Don't you want to see these copies of the findings?
Is that Johnny Anderson versus, what was that? The most of these?
Mm-hmm. It's one of them.
I'm aware of it.
Okay.
And we do quote that in the staff report and recognize that we're not seeking a ban.
My name is Suzanne and I don't know anything about the legalities or anything that is going on. What I do know about the, not the massage, whatever, going tattoo. I have been in this community for 17 years. I am a volunteer for volleyball in Riverbank. I am an ex-coach at Riverbank High School, two years. What I have found through, I'm also in recovery, I've been in recovery for a really long time, 22 years. What I have found in going into both of these establishments and the people that are in this establishment, that it is a really good environment. I don't know about the one on the highway. I have not been in there. But what I do know is that these atmospheres are an atmosphere of, they're not a negative atmosphere, they're a positive atmosphere. And I just wanted to say that I welcome them into the community and it also is bringing a lot of other people into the community. There's people that travel really far to come play volleyball here in Riverbank since we've started the recreation and I'll mention to them, hey, you know, there's a shop opening downtown. They're excited about it. They're coming from Stockton, they're coming from Modesto. Hey, come to the wine and cheese. I just think, personally, I just think that this is bringing a lot of positive things into this community and that's all I got. Thank you.
Good evening, from Humboldt from Riverbank. I wanted to clarify the definition of tattoo. Here it says a permanent picture or design made on the skin. But then I read for you in another book, do not lasso your bodies for the dead and do not tattoo yourself. I am the Lord, from the Book of Leviticus, chapter 19, verse 28. That's the supreme law. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Dawn Deanna. I'm actually a resident of Oakdale. I did live in Riverbank for about five years. One of the things that I did read in the Modesto B, personally, I feel like wasn't correct, as far as it being an establishment that's going to bring gangs or hoodlums or, you know, ghetto people into the city. I think it does the opposite. I'm a single mother of four children. I'm a homeowner. I work at an elementary school in Tracy and I have tattoos. I think you're going to actually get the opposite when you have a tattoo parlor. The people who you're not wanting to get into your establishment or your city are people who can't afford or don't want to pay for a professional tattoo. I would come here to be at a professional shop where somebody I know is going to be sanitary and clean, where I can bring my children with me and we're going to be in a safe environment. So I just want to say, I feel like the article is actually the opposite of what you're going to be getting with a business who has a license and who is being watched on from the health department.
So my name is Anthony Fennell. I'm Jeremy's older brother. I just had some thoughts on this. Typically politicians or people that are in office tend to think that they have an obligation to write volumes of laws, to fix things before they happen. And I just wanted to suggest, a longtime role model of mine, Congressman Ron Paul, when he was asked when it would be right for him to write legislation or to try to fix problems with people, it really, he never, he would go to the people, say in this situation, I just want to suggest, because you guys are going to do what you want to do, but he would go to those people when a problem occurred and ask them, what is the best way to fix this problem because I'm not in your industry. I don't understand that I can't hope to micromanage their business and the problems like you guys would. And in the absence of being able to work with people, then you have an obligation to act on, to fix problems that are actually happening. I just really would love to think of Riverbank as a I just really, uh, would love to think of Riverbank as a, uh, you know, a place where I, I, I know I'm free and with so much happening in the country, it just, uh, it's hard to do anything. So much red tape, you've got to wait this, you've got to do this, you've got to stand on your head while you wait for a license to do something else and, um, unless there is a problem, address the problems that come up, but we don't need to be paranoid. And that was just my, my thoughts on that.
Hello, my name is Darryl Daniel, 3442 Outfisten Street. Uh, I wear two hats at this moment and one of them is on the, uh, Act of, uh, for the Chamber of Commerce. I think any, uh, uh, businesses, any legal businesses, uh, should be extremely, uh, recommended to try to get into downtown to, because you knew what it looked like, a mud hole a long time ago and it was a deserted thing. And so we need whatever we can get for any legal, uh, businesses in town. So, uh, uh, on the half, on the next hat is the, uh, uh, Public Health and Safety Welfare. When you delay people 45 days, something like that, that's, uh, time is money and especially like if someone's paying a lot of rent or they have to sag or that, that, they probably already talked to other people on that. When you're dealing with ordinance of public safety and welfare, and I'm surprised that, like, someone else was describing that it even went to city council and, uh, because when the other fast food drive-ins came in, there was nothing done on the clean air for dry-thrus. Because, uh, right now, like, uh, with so many dry-thrus, uh, going out, they are polluting the air and that should have been a public health and safety welfare item. And that was not, uh, dealt with at all. It, it even skipped the city council. Uh, the last, the last two that was even done didn't even go to city council. It went a little bit of one meeting and planning department and that was it. So, uh, but, uh, if you're talking about cleaner for dry-thrus and stuff like that, that's another thing like that. But a public, uh, safety and welfare for a tattoo place, myself, for many years, I wasn't even, um, uh, didn't like much with tattoos until I really learned more and more about them and stuff like that. And they, uh, they're actually really good people. I was really surprised. It's not like a gang thing kind of deal that I've, I used to thought that it was. So, uh, but anyway, I'm actually for, if we need a business in town, let's get the business in town.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tammy and I am a resident of Riverbank. Um, I'm also a professional in the medical field and I have tattoos. Um, I also am a believer in Christ and I don't believe that, um, anything that's on my body is anything that's defiling or, um, lewd. Um, I also believe that, um, I've had lots of extensive schooling and I'm very educated and I would hate to have people look at me in a manner, um, of discrimination as to what I put on my body as what I feel is free, freedom of speech and, and art. Um, and it doesn't take away from any of the person I am or, or the places that I go or the people that I surround myself with. So I would say that my vote would be for you guys to allow the tattoo shops that are already here to, um, and then modify for the, um, the hold on any, any future shops.
Hi, I'm Chris Martin, pastor, senior pastor of Living Grace. I didn't get a chance to read the article. I had my assistant, um, debrief me on it. However, um, one of the applicants is part of our congregation, um, and, uh, an amazing person with great integrity. Um, as far as a business, I know it does produce revenue. I also agree with the fact of having the spirit and, and building relationships with our business owners as they come into town beyond having heavy policy that does not, uh, does not necessarily, um, vet everything that we're going to want to vet in a business. I, I really do believe in personal, personal, I'm sorry, personal, personal. I, I believe in personal relational development is the best way to grow business. Um, one of the other, um, one of the other things I wanted to say about that is I, I did hear the comment personally and just to clarify the whole thing, I know Leviticus, Leviticus says that, it also says in the book Revelation that Jesus has on his thigh, King of Kings and Lord of Lords.
Amen.
Hello, Larry King, resident of Riverbank. Uh, my question, I guess, is more procedural. This California Code 65858, it, it does say all it was said that it says, but the, um, but sub-paragraph C suggests that the legislative body shall not adopt or extend any interim ordinance pursuant to this section unless the ordinance contains legislative findings that there is a current and immediate threat to public health. And everyone has spoken to a current and immediate threat to public health, but I'm wondering if there was any more information that we, that we haven't heard. Was there any, did anybody come forward and say that there were any diseases spread or that there was any additional violence around the establishments that currently are in Riverbank or, or even nationwide? Was there any statistics at all to, to be a current and immediate threat? Because otherwise, I mean, the other option would be to just use the normal procedure for adopting a zoning ordinance. And unless there is a current and immediate threat, which I don't know if applications for businesses is a current and immediate threat. So I would just ask to know that information. Is an application a threat or is it, is there a threat that we are unaware of that it just isn't being mentioned? And maybe, you know, maybe there are national statistics that suggest these things, but I haven't heard them. I'm just asking.
Anthony Salpino, uh, Riverbank, one year. One thing I'm confused about, it's like the current and actual threats to the public health and safety, like, it's actually the exact opposite in my opinion. I'd be excited that you guys have this rush of business wanting to come to your town. Like, when you think of McKinney Road, you just think that's where all the tattoo parlors are at and that's what we're trying to turn Riverbank into. And I would just be really excited about it. There's no, I haven't heard anything about diseases, no gangs. I mean, I don't look like a gangbanger or anything like that. Nobody here does. It's just, it's, it's real confusing. It's all of a sudden out of the blue. But, and, uh, I disagree with what all they say, like, like the two current ones that are in there, I mean, push those through, but kind of, there's easier ways to monitor without, I think, I think I said not banning, but, uh, just putting it on hold. There's easier ways to do it and there is like an AB 300, there is stuff put out there. If a legit shop is going to open up, they have to order under all these rules and everything. But you guys should be excited for like the rush of business that's trying to come to your town. Like, that's just my opinion.
My name's Allison and I wanted to, um, say a few things about the public health factor. I work in the medical field and I know for a fact that there are plastic surgeons now contacting tattoo artists to help women with breast cancer. So it's a more acceptable thing and my healthcare facility is actually reconsidering their dress code to allow people with tattoos to show them and we're not going to have to cover them anymore. And for the, whoever wrote the, the article in the Modesto B, they wrote, um, they listed a few diseases and if you do your research, there's not a single documented case by the CDC for any of those diseases that were mentioned. There was one for tuberculosis, but that wasn't on the tattoo shop. That was the water that they were supplied with. So that's actually the water company, not the tattoo artist. And I don't think that they should be held accountable for that because that's not anything that they had control over the water. That's the water company, not the artist. Um, HIV, there's not a single documented case. Hepatitis, there are people with hepatitis, but everything's disposable now, so they have to follow the same standards, the health code, the county, all of that, which eliminates that. So they are completely safe and I don't think that the public health issue should be something that's being considered.
Uh, sir, only once.
Only once?
Only once.
I just have a question.
Any other public comment? So you're not going to bring it back to the council for consideration, comments, recommendations? First, we're not banning, we're putting on hold future applications, I do believe. Not the current ones. That what you have suggested, Mr. Anderson? Are we, do we have a plan of what we intend and what's our expectations at the end of 45 days? Ms. Anderson? Give me an Anderson, Anthony.
Uh, Mayor, members of the city council, we do not have specific criteria in place where we, we, we are concerned about things like hours of operation, limited sale of other things. We want to, we want to take the time to actually make sure that we do provide guidelines and criteria that make sense for our community. Both of the applicants that spoke this evening offered their help. We'd like to take them up on that. They're familiar with the industry. We, we think we, there's benefit to be had from a dialogue with, with them. So we don't have, we have general ideas, but nothing specific at this point.
I do know that, uh, a comment made to me by a customer of...
I apologize, that is me.
Uh, there is...
I swore and I put it on silent.
There is an individual I know who's a customer of, uh, an establishment here who does speak of other items, including tattooing by a company that is not licensed as tattooing and that should be a concern. And that's one of the things that we are concerned about. AB 300 in nine, uh, 2012 gave a very long litany of requirements for the tattoo industry and you're following those and that, I understand that that will not produce the health hazards as, you know, if, if you follow them, if you're an established one. What we need to do is take a look at throughout the city, how we get our hands around those all entities that, uh, can become a tattoo without knowledge. That's the dangerous areas, not the legitimate ones. Tattooing is mainstream in my opinion and in that it has a, a great following. I have great employees with, with artwork, um, and I know a lot of individuals with great artwork. My concern is that we all of a sudden are doubling the sizes in a matter of a month, the number of tattoo parlors or, uh, tattoo businesses and that we are, uh, looking at the possibly two more. Let's find out what we, how we can cope with it. We haven't coped with it and not only this industry, but throughout the, uh, all the industries, how we're going to manage the new wave of influx coming on in. My recommendation to this council and if you, is that we accept the ordinance as modified and that we have some type of a plan that at the end of 45 days, any additional, uh, business license, that we have some type of plan, um, on how to cope with and deal with it. And we need a plan if we're going to put this moratorium for future business applicants Mayor, let me, let me, let me qual, let me qualify that modification language again just so it's very clear and it's going to be part of your consideration unless, unless Tom wants to add to this. But what we're suggesting is as a modification to the proposed emergency ordinance, that you would add a section five and that section five would read as follows, that there would be exceptions. At the discretion of the city, the city may approve a business license for a tattoo establishment while this moratorium is in place if, one, the business license, license application was filed, excuse me, was first submitted to the city prior to September 23rd of 2014 and number two, the city grants, and I'm going to insert, um, staff review approval and that would be the community development director, um, right, the, the community development director approve, um, of the use.
Or designate, I mean, you don't technically have a community development director.
Well, I mean, you could, you could, you could say, you could insert city manager or their designee. I mean, you can do that too. Oh, the two that are in process will continue... Right. The point, the point I'm trying to make is that it's a staff review and it's not necessary to go back through a conditional use permit process, which means notification, you know, time, you know, six months was mentioned, wouldn't be six months, but there is time involved and then also a public hearing in front of the planning commission. So I'm not suggesting that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll go next. We really do want businesses to come to our downtown area and, um, I do feel that, well, we all know that tattooing is an international art and that being a tattoo artist is a professional skill. And I understand and I also appreciate the city's position for wanting to limit the like-kind businesses, um, in one concentrated area of the city. But in the meantime, I am glad that John brought up the provision and I am support of, uh, letting the businesses that have applied, um, for their, the applicants that have applied for the business license, letting that go through and then we put something in place. And I also appreciate your efforts in, uh, being involved in the decisions of what we need to do, um, to move forward, um, for new businesses coming in. I really want to appreciate, let you know, we do appreciate that, your help and we look forward to working with you and thank you so much.
I just want to say, um, that I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. I thought they were well done. Um, I think they were heard by everyone up here and I too, uh, do not want to see businesses going away. We need actually the opposite and I think everybody's in agreement with that. Um, I too believe that we have to be very careful and being a business owner, I'm sure you don't want 10 tattoo shops all in the same area. It's not good business practice. So, um, with that said, I am for the modification of this to have the two applicants, um, proceed and then take a really strong and heavy look at, at what we're going and understand that, you know, we're also looking out for your, your best interests as business owners in the area. Thank you.
I agree with all the comments that have been made so far. I really appreciate all of the public's comments, Mr. Fennell and, and his brother and, and your comments as well, sir. All the comments made to Mr. Friedman. Uh, we appreciate your offers, you know, to help, uh, in developing something that we can all live with comfortably and I think this will benefit all of us, you as well as, as the surrounding community and, uh, really appreciate that. And we, we do want businesses to come and we are excited about businesses coming to, to Riverbank certainly. So, thank you so much.
I accept tattoo art as a recognized form of art and I think it does need to be watched over so that it is safe for the health and safety of the people. But likewise, to make everything short, I agree with what my three former colleagues have just said, that we should support the modification and let those applications that have been already submitted go through. And then we need to hammer out our policies. But while we're hammering out our policies, I would like to ask, because I hate, and you guys probably agree with this, I hope so, because you brought it up, we don't need to do something that's already been done by the state and the county. We don't need a book this thick about it. We need to piggyback on what they have already done and then we need to tweak it with just a few pages to fit our particular city, because why repeat something that's already in existence? So I would encourage us to look at it in that fashion.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve item 5.3 with modifications as read by Mr. Anderson. I second.
We're motion to approve item 5.3 as changes modified by Mr. Anderson and we have a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I know you guys probably have other things you want to do if you want to file out or you want to sit and, and listen to the most exciting parts come out.
Yeah, it gets better.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good night and be safe.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, Jeremy.
Hit me up, I'll get in contact with you guys. There, there does have to be something done and we know a lot about this industry, so we're definitely here to help.
Great idea.
Well, if it's getting a tattoo, I'm a baby, I'm a chicken for paying...
Well, if it's getting a tattoo, I'm a baby, I'm a chicken for pain, so you count me out.
No, not me.
You're a chicken for pain.
I am.
All right, we'll continue our public hearing. Excuse me, gentlemen, we are at a public hearing. I'm going to read the public hearing notice for the following public hearing item. 5.1 was published in a local newspaper for general circulation on August 20th, 2014. Said item 5.1 was continued by the city council during consideration at regular meeting of September 9th, 2014. A notice of continuance was posted within 24 hours on the exterior bulletin board near the entrance of the city, of the council chambers on September 10th, 2014. Public hearing notice for item 5.2 was published in the local newspaper for general circulation on September 10th, 2014. Pursuant of California Government Code, item 5.3 is presented under the provisions of urgency ordinance, which we've already heard. Item 5.1, a resolution for the city council, of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving the amended first-time homebuyers program guidelines and housing rehabilitation program guidelines, including the single-family temporary relocation program.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council, we have Rosa Casas here this evening. She handles our homebuyer programs, and she'll be providing the overview this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Rosa Casas, as you heard, and I am the housing specialist for the City of Riverbank. Among the functions that we will oversee by state requirement of, of the Department of Housing and Community Development, they ask that we ask the members of our community sitting here with us to, if they could please voluntarily provide their name and perhaps phone number or email to show that this was a public hearing and there was members of our community present. So I will be passing this around. It is optional, and I will pick it up when I'm finished. Okay. Well, members of our council, among us, we have the City of Riverbank Community Development Block Grant is what CDBG stands for, First-Time Homebuyers and Housing Rehab Guidelines Update. This is something that we must do in order to project our program, sorry, to project our program guidelines and get this to fit through our community as well as the state The guidelines that we are proposing have provided detailed information on potential applicants, real estate agents, and lenders regarding requirements to both, both programs. It ensures consistency in the application procedure for potential applicants. It also ensures consistency in the application process by city staff. We truly use these guidelines at all times to, to provide transparency in our process. As you may know, the state does monitor our programs, and with our guidelines in place, it allows us to keep everything cohesive. The first guidelines to be presented will be the first-time homebuyers programs, and those are Attachment A, I believe. The purpose of this is to design, is designed to be a gap financing mechanism whereby the city is able to loan funds to those residents whose primary loan is insufficient for the purchase of their first home. This program is funded by the granted, is grant-funded and awarded by the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG programs, and Home Investment Partnership Home programs. Why CDBG has an acronym and Home doesn't, I do not know, but...
Yeah.
Funding sources require first-time homebuyers applicants to meet Housing and Urban Development Income Guidelines to qualify for our program. And CDBG is the state of, it's under the State of California Housing Community Development, which is also under HUD. Program highlights would be that our first-time homebuyers program has a maximum loan cap of $70,000. The loan term is to a 30-year deferred, and this allows the primary, the homeowner to concentrate on making their primary loan payments, which will not put them in a bind during those 30 years. It would be a 3% simple interest that will be accumulated and paid off at the end of the 30th year. Applicants must not exceed annual income, household income limits established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD. However, CDBG and Home do issue their income limits a little bit later than HUD, and they're the same amounts, but they do get issued perhaps 30 to 60 days after, but it keeps within the same income limits. Homes may not exceed HUD purchase price limits. Currently, they have established for the Stanislaus County of an existing home semi-owned of $143,000 and new homes of 241,000. This may be an issue for our city in, in short and long terms, because the market has started to move a considered positive movement, but amongst that result is also challenging to meet those price limits. Therefore, the city will be looking at, following the market to see what the true limits should be and propose that to the states in, in the next funding cycle. The proposed amendments establish a priority listing to the title company on the use of down payments funding that are received from the buyers. First of all, we, we help with the down payment. Second, any funds that we provide within the $70,000 would help to issue closing costs such as appraised fees, loan origination fees, other fees, as well as inspection fees that must be completed, and the purchasing price. Updates that are also proposed is the update on the conflict of interest requirements, which have been in our guidelines, I believe, since they started receiving funding. However, they want to specify the, the policy of who, who would be affected by the conflict of interest. And this is something that is addressed to public making, any policymaking members of the city, such as city council, city manager, department directors, administrative staff, and these are items that are regulated through the state's regulation as well as the federal Other proposed amendments would be Section 3.2B, which regulates the making of a house, of a home ineligible for a housing rehab program when a home is purchased with a first-time homebuyers unless the rehabilitation is considered as part of the purchasing process. Currently, this would limit any future, any homebuyers purchasing now in the future if their income were not to increase and the homes were to become affected by war and terror, or if the applicant were to be, become of age, that would be an effect where we could not issue them housing rehab program eligibility. This is something that has currently been proposed. Prior loans that were issued to first-time homebuyers do not have this regulation. Additional items that are amended or added, Section 3.2D, which states that eligibility homes should be sufficient to meet the needs of the homebuyers' household without overcrowding. Generally, this means no more than two persons per bedroom or living room, and this, we would hope to see that removes any restrictions to the 3-2-1 bedroom homes to consider for the program. Currently, that is what we are working with, a standard home of a three-bedroom, two-bath. However, our market also shows that some of the three-bedroom, two-bath are either in dire need of rehab before purchasing, and, and homes that are available may have three bedrooms, two and a half, if it's a second story, even possibly three-plus, which is a possible den converted into a bedroom, and at this point, we would not be able to make those purchases based on recommendations from the state monitoring process.
At that point, right now, have we asked for any modifications from the state to allow for the conditions that exist in Riverbank, two and a half baths or three-plus bedrooms?
The interesting item on that is that it's nowhere in our guidelines, per se. The guidelines that we present, we take from their website, and we implement the, the loan amounts and different parts to fit the City of Riverbank, but there is no mention of what our standard home should or can be, except for when we've had monitorings. We've been, it has been suggested that we be very careful with the types of homes, because members of our community could see that if a household of two is buying a four-bedroom, it's a luxury. Not everybody will, would have think so, because if it's a young couple, they're going to form a family, and this is a long-term loan for 30 years. However, if we have a household of three and they can't purchase a four-bedroom, you know, if we have a house, I'm sorry, household of five or six, and their income does not provide the amount of loan to purchase that four-bedroom, it becomes a perception item of whether we're favoring one group over the other and whether we're allowing luxury items to be purchased. So it's kind of a...
I know, it was mentioned to me by a city official from a city in Stanislaus, I won't tell you the city, but it starts with a T, told me that they were doing what, they would fit the price, not the house, the price to the program, and they have been regulating, you know, four bedrooms.
And that's where we, we need to consider where we want to go with this, because the price, I have to remind you, is $143,000, which is not a realistic purchasing price for our county.
That's for used houses, for new houses, what, $241?
$41, yes.
Well, that is a little bit more realistic. Okay.
And that was for housing, first-time homebuyers. I don't know if you would like to have any other questions on first-time homebuyers?
My questions are along that line, too, about the discrepancy between the prices and what's in our area.
Yes. So like I mentioned before, we have been instructed to monitor the markets, which we will be doing so by taking the last, the homes purchased within the last year, and then monitoring what is available on the market on a weekly basis to develop a semi-study to present to the, to the Community Development Department, as well as our, compare them to other cities in our county, and provide those to CDBG and also Home to get an exemption or an amendment to that income limit, I mean, purchasing price limit. Next item that I would have is the housing rehab loan program, and this program has been with us for several years. We provide this to assist eligible homeowners for the corrections of health and safety items, as well as code violations located within the program eligibility areas. Homeowners and home investors can become eligible. Currently, the, the program is concentrated on home occupant owners due to the large interest list at hand. Programs provide this assistance in the form of below-market rate loans and/or deferred payment loans, and it is used to finance the cost of necessary repairs that will provide the homeowners with a healthy, safe, sanitary, and code-compliance home. Program highlights are, it's available to low, to, low to moderate income households based on the CDBG guidelines. Income limits must be less than or equal to the housing community development income limits. First-time homebuyers and housing rehabs are subject to the same income limits, because they're both addressed to low, low to moderate income households. Owner occupants may be, may be loaned up to $100,000, and in some past occasions, we've done reconstructions of homes that would cost too much to rehab, and that could be up to $270,000. There is a form and process that must be followed. We just don't decide which ones we rehab and which ones we do reconstruction. There is actual testing, and we provide it to our loan committee as well as our state rep with Home and CDBG. Homeowners must have equity in their home. It is a equity-based loan. It is a many-time second loan against their property. Occasionally, we'll have, it will hold the first. Funds cannot be used for luxury items. Luxury items would be certain types of countertops. We cannot address whirlpools, pools, landscaping will be to a minimum. Current program, the program is being funded by the Calhome Grant and CDBG Grant, as well as program income produced by prior CDBG loans. They, both programs are under the Community, State of California Community Development Department. Eligible items would be, which are very much in need by many of our interest lists, is roof repairs, mold remediation, as well as mold repair, ADA accessibility with seniors and disability, disabled residents. A lot of our AVAC upgrades, or we're seeing a lot of swamp cooler replacements, reconstruction, and health and safety issues that are very wide-ranging. Program amendments. We must update the forms of our documentation, renumbering. What they have done is they've restructured the order they have their guidelines, so there's a lot of shifting around, not necessarily a lot of changing of regulations. We need to update our, a single-family temporary relocation plan as well. The one currently enforced is quite a couple, several years old, so we, we need to bring everything up to date. The recommendation is that the council hold a public hearing, adopt the amended guidelines for the first-time homebuyers program and housing rehab programs, and guidelines will be required for state approval, which they will be mailed in with appropriate resolution minutes and public hearing notices. It will go to them, and if they have any suggestions, that it would not be a huge change, then we could enforce it or come back to you as a follow-up, as a new hearing for the recommendation adoption. recommendation adoption. Any questions you may have?
There will be in a moment, sir.
Rosa, I believe that in the past, we had a concern that there weren't, that there weren't many of our residents that knew about these programs. So have we done anything to change our outreach?
Outreach have been increased due to the awareness of funding. Prior to being awarded, it was, we would do outreach maybe once a year because that creates a lot of interest, but we didn't have the funding available. So we have a large waiting list of 33-plus on our list, and the program awareness has been issued with letters to our local churches. Both programs, we've sent out to, we've done a press release on both programs. For the first-time home buyers, we've also sent out notices to our local real estate agents and have invited, suggested that they invite staff to maybe their monthly meetings so that we can discuss what we're looking for and what do's and don'ts to make our job a little bit more smoothly. There has been letters to our local drill office to promote our housing rehab program. Our county also prints out a little pamphlet where they say what programs are available. They have contacted us as well, and we provide that information. I believe it's going, it is on our city website. We were waiting for some of, for the guidelines to be presented, to bring those up to date. There is a lot of interest in our real estate community. They do call quite a bit, and a lot of lenders also call quite a bit to get the information on what they're required to look out for. So we have increased it. If you have any suggestions, we're more than open to go that route.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Public comment?
I have a question.
You have to approach the podium.
Just a little confused about the bedroom situation with where it said two persons per bedroom or living room. Does that mean that if there's six people in a family and they can only find a two-bedroom house, that it's okay for them to keep two in the living room?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's what that means. Okay. Thank you. And a suggestion. I think it's great that the city is willing to come to the real estate agents and tell them about this program. We have a Central Valley Association of Realtors meeting every Wednesday over on Rose Avenue in Modesto. Maybe we can set you up to come over and do a talk to all the Realtors, and you get more exposure that way.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Any further public? If not, I bring it back to the council. At this point, we accept the reading. We do not approve, correct? This is the first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no. In this case, I'm sorry. In this case, it's a resolution. I'm sorry. It's like the wrong one.
That's right, because it was noticed and read. Okay. This is now a resolution, a motion to accept item 5.2.
I'll make a motion to accept item 5.2.
I second it.
I have a first and a stepped-on second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title III, Administration, Chapter 32, Commissions and Authorities, by repealing Environmental Review Committee ERC, Section 32.70 through 32.83, and adding ERC Sections 32.7 through 32.81 of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor.
You don't make the titles.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. John Anderson will be presenting this item this evening.
Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, Contract Community Development Director, and we try to make it as absolutely confusing on you as we possibly can. Anyway, this is a special committee that was formed by the City Council back in 2007 to help with the administration of rather large and complex environmental issues with new development projects. Unfortunately, the makeup as presented and ultimately approved in '07 makes it a little more difficult on staff to certainly get all the information out, to gather all the appropriate people in that committee and to conduct the meetings. Currently, as worded, it would include the mayor, the chairman of my commission, as well as members of staff. So what I'm suggesting to do is, is to modify the existing language, not to eliminate the ERC, because I think there's still some very critical roles and responsibilities that the Environmental Review Committee can help the Community Development Department with. I'm suggesting that it be downgraded to a staff function, city manager, director of public works, planning, et cetera, et cetera, and that we meet more informally and review all the application-related materials, and then render our decision whether or not we can file a categorical exemption for a project, whether or not we can file a notice of determination, or whether or not we're going to indeed require a full-blown environmental impact report for a project. So it keeps it more at staff level, eliminates the need to prepare and post agendas, or eliminates the need to prepare staff reports, to monitor minutes, and all the other formal things that you would expect of a committee. So what we've suggested is, we presented to you as the existing language, as was approved in '07, and then the proposed language. The highlights that I had previously presented were, you know, we've shown in the red-line version, but we thought that might be a little bit confusing. So what we've shared with you is just the proposed new language, and then I've just highlighted some of those changes for you in my presentation tonight. This is the first reading of this proposed ordinance change. This is a public hearing, and at that point, I don't have anything really other to say other than what I've just presented. So are there any questions about what the ERC means, or what its intent is, or what its intent was, or what staff is proposing to change?
ERC, as you're proposing, is still above and beyond what is currently required.
It is, it is less than what's currently required.
No, it's less than what was accepted by ordinance, but more than what our environmental reviews most counties and cities do.
Well, most cities and counties, I don't want to pick on any one jurisdiction, I mean, they have, you know, what they call an ERC at staff level. And that's really what this is. This is taking it back down to a staff-level committee. It still has a function of reviewing projects as defined by the applicants for compliance with CEQA, and making a determination, and then giving that determination back to the applicant. So it's not, well, it is, it is an easier process, less red tape, less government intervention. That's really what we're talking about. Okay? Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Saying none, I bring it back to the council.
Make a motion that we approve item 5.2.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.2 and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, that includes the public hearing portion of it. I'm going to go back to item 4.1. Item 4.1, second reading by title only, and adoption of ordinance number 2014-007 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title V, Public Works, Chapter 5.0, Garbage, Section 50.10, Rates to Be Charged of the City of the Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Yes. Mayor, members of the City Council, as you may recall, at the September 9th meeting of the City Council, an ordinance was introduced for first reading and consideration at a public hearing to change the way that garbage rates can be set in the City of Riverbank. At the current time, they are required to be set by ordinance. The item before you at this time is to make them be able to be set by resolution, again, kind of streamlining the process a bit. It does not, it still would require a public vote, public hearing, but it doesn't require a 30-day lag time. So at this time, we are recommending the City Council conduct the second reading by title only and approve adoption of ordinance number 2014-007.
Does anyone have any questions? We're there at the last one. Does anyone from the public have comments on item 4.1?
I think I got the notice on that where the bill's going to be going up, and I've been trying to put, because it's based off of water, and because I do have, I have eliminated some of my machines over time where they've, because everything that, when it was built in 1963, it was water-cooled. Water was free, and it was the best way to have a very small building. Saying that is, is the amount of water that I'm using is, and flushing, is basically, most of it is clean water. I don't use garbage disposal. We've learned many ways of not putting any grease and stuff like that down the drains anyway. We've learned to different things on that, so is, but if that's, basically on the water bill is what it is, and it also has to do with the garbage.
That's not what we're talking, we're talking garbage.
Garbage only. Okay, okay. So, okay, usually it's connected in the same bill, and so that's why I was like, ah, you know, but, but either way, the garbage is, it's, it seems like it's very, it's gone up so much, different things, and, and I've been trying to find ways to getting a smaller ban maybe, or doing something that I can, because we are, you know, to be charged on something that is the same as a large franchise is just very challenging, because we are an extremely small business. So, so anyway.
Good evening, Mayor and members. If I, if I remember this, I went to the council meeting, not the council meeting, but the, I went to their meeting they had last, last week, and they were talking about Gilton going to raise the rent on garbage. I could understand that because of the way things are nowadays, but to leave furniture on the curb site so they can go by and pick it up. I'm thinking Tuesday morning, Gilton's going to come by and pick up the garbage cans and whatnot, and Wednesday, they're going to come by and pick up your couch and old chairs and everything. So here's, somebody missed it Wednesday, so they're going to put their couch and old chair out there Thursday, and it's going to sit there on the curb all week, looking like junk. Of course, it's not my business, but anyhow, it's not a good sign, garbage all over, because it's going to happen. Now, the rate they want to increase, that's fine. I, makes me no difference. I got the big can, and I'm tickled pink with it, so, think about it.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and the members from Riverbank, and on the part of the garbage part, there are so many examples that you can see in Modesto, not too far from here, that they pick up precisely the furniture that Eddie was talking about, and it's true, I guess, back up his, his feeling on that, and including the televisions and so many electronic stuff that people have been trying to get ready for years, and unfortunately, you can see it right off Coffee Road and Morel, a lot of times, right on the agricultural part of it. A lot of people have been abandoning their things in there, and on the last pickup that they had at the yard of Riverbank, you could see that most of the items brought up were big pieces that had been there in their backyard for years, and that's what they're going to end up doing, putting the garbage in front of the homes, onto the street, taking precious parking spaces, et cetera. It's going to be a mess. And so if it is promised by those people that if they didn't pick it up, that one, if they didn't put it out on time, or whatever reason it wasn't picked up, to promise to the city that they're going to have to put it back to their yard and wait for the next week, then it's part of the solution. Thank you very much.
If this new billing process includes picking up furniture, I'm all for it. I see furniture thrown on the side of Coffee Road and Morel and different places in the country all the time, and it's sickening. If people had a way to get rid of it, I think they would do it. As a Realtor, I find houses all the time, people moved out and left tons of garbage, trash, and furniture that's left for somebody else to clean up, and if this, so just a couple dollars more to make our city cleaner, I'm all for it.
Any further comment? I bring it back. Ms. Anderson, can you explain the process for bulk pickup?
Yes, and, and I also, too, I was remiss in not clarifying in my comments that this is about changing the way the rates are set. This evening, we're not actually taking any action on rates. And in terms of the bulk item pickup, that is something that is, will be going before the council, and certainly appreciate the comments from the public in regards to that. We do believe that this is something that will eventually help people get things out of their backyards from attracting vomits, et cetera, and have them picked up. It does, is done on an appointment basis, so somebody would have to call in in advance and schedule that pickup, and so hopefully that will eliminate many of the issues that came up as potential downfall. If there is an ongoing problem with that, there are limits, like you can't leave your cans out for too many days. If that became an ongoing problem, I'm guessing we would get a phone call and we would talk to the resident about that. But we're, we're hopeful that it will have the impact that was communicated by Mr. Foley and others. It will help people clean it out, help Realtors clean it out, and minimize the things that are hidden away in backyards and garages.
And they have two pickups a year?
Yes, I believe they have two pickups, yes.
They schedule it, it's picked up. If they leave it, if they just put it out without scheduling, they will be required to remove it from the street until they can get a pickup. And usually, the pickup is not the next day. You pick it up, say, Wednesday, the third, and it's not just, put it out there, they'll pick it up. Okay.
May I also add that the individual, in terms of the, the business and the can, I'd be happy to review some of the options with Daryl in regards to his pickup. So select a call staff, we'll be happy to talk to him about that.
And this, again, is not on rates. This is not, this is just on how we will establish future rates?
Yes.
All right. We've heard the, the unfinished business of item 4.1. Do I have a recommendation or comments from the City Council?
I make a recommendation that we accept item 4.1 for the second reading as stated.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve item 4.1 as read, and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.1, Local Redevelopment Authority, LRA, Budget Report, Fiscal Year End 2013-14.
Yes. Mayor, members of the City Council, Ms. Debbie Olson, the Executive Director of the Local Redevelopment Authority, and Melissa Holdaway, a management analyst, will be presenting the fiscal year-end budget report for FY 2013-2014.
Good evening, Chair and Authority members. Thank you for making time on your calendar for us. Tonight, we are going to bring me, we being myself and Melissa Holdaway, the best administrative analyst anybody could have, very proud of the work she's doing. We are doing this We are doing this in furtherance of the city's core values of transparency and fiscal responsibility. Tonight, we're going to share the Fiscal Year End 2013-14. Before I do, I want, before Melissa shares the slide presentation, I want to make the point that we've taken a little longer this time to bring it to you, for good reason. We've been working very closely with finance, with the Department of Finance and staff to shore up and become more consistent with the way the city expresses all their other departments, how they reflect the revenues and expenses, and so tonight, you are going to see something that's familiar, but we're also going to make some slight changes going forward that I, we think will be easier to understand, the revenue and expense reports. Again, this is not a balance sheet we're showing you, it's a revenue and expenditure reports, but we certainly will entertain any questions you might have about either. So, without further delay, I'd like to bring Melissa Holdaway up here to show you the presentation. And then we'll both be here for questions if you have any. Good evening, Chair and Authority members. Tonight, I bring forth the Fiscal Year End Budget for 2013-14, and in your, in your staff report, there was a, an attachment that has the full revenue and expenditure reports by category, and in this presentation tonight, I have broke that down by revenue and expenditures by fund, so it's an easier read, okay? The revenues from site revenue, which includes rent, sale of personal property, which we have none at this time, Department of Defense caretaker revenue, utility revenue, and other revenue, which is printing, any, I'm trying to think of the other revenue, printing and the weight, with the weight tags, the weight tags, sorry. It's late, I'm tired. And in the fiscal year budget, we had budgeted 1.367 million. We actually received 1.721 million, and that is due to additional tenants on the site, and so we've gotten more utility revenue and rents out of them, and that's 26% over the budget that we had anticipated. The revenues for grant and loan revenue, we did get an ESCA grant for 10 million, and then we have an OEA grant of 470,000, and then an ED Bank loan of, it was initially 300,000, but in this fiscal year, we had 50,000 left. And out of the fiscal year budget, we anticipated 11.5. We actually received 11.07, and that is a difference of 509,750. It's under what we anticipated because of the transportation and disposal costs with the ESCA that we haven't incurred costs for, so we're not going to be collecting that. And probably in this new fiscal year, we do have some costs with a modification that's come forth, and that'll be presented in the first fiscal year budget next month. Expenditures for the site include all repairs, permits, utilities, utility maintenance, landscaping, fire suppression maintenance, facility management, and security contracts. We anticipated 1.3. We actually did 1.3 with a difference of 36,000, so we're a little under, and that is due to the electrical repairs that we had started in this fiscal year, but we weren't able to complete them, so it's a carryover in this new fiscal year for the, the OCB repairs.
You're reading your report very well.
Thank you. ED Bank expenditures, the ED Bank loan funded the specific plan and is now complete. A balance of 5,488 will be disencumbered. The loan repayment is due in December, and we will be making that payment on December Administrative expenditures are mainly comprised of OEA grant funds and the agency's administrative costs with a 10% match coming from leasehold revenue. Unanticipated legal fees push expenses in this category over anticipated budget, particularly for the Martin Transport case, and also litigation with Martin Transport and one other, so we went way over with Churchill White's expenses. ESCA expenditures, the executed ESCA agreement included a not-to-exceed total of 10,997,453. The LRA received a lump sum initially of 9,364,993, with the remaining 1,632,460 received on an accrual basis for actual transportation and disposal costs. Funds were not completely drawn down in this fiscal year, like we anticipated, so we have a carryover of funds in this new fiscal year to complete projects that were in a modification that was accepted by the Army in August, I believe. Additional budget items noted, the LRA allocated OEA grant funds to cover additional legal expenditures and add an economic development market study under the contractual services. This was part of the strategic planning session, I believe, that was put forth to the LRA. A scope expansion was pending for the ESCA at fiscal year end, therefore, the grant was not closed. The remaining balance of funds are anticipated to be spent on those additional activities in this next fiscal year. On the statement of revenues, we did have revenue of 12.729 and expenditures of 12,022, with an ending balance of 7,06334. Any questions?
I have no questions. Any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have public comment on item 6.1? So you know, public comment on item 6.1? I bring it back to the board for its recommendation to accept or reject the LRA budget.
I make a motion that we accept the LRA budget proposed this year?
I'll second that.
That's for 12-13, I mean, 13-14.
For 12-13-14, right.
We have a motion to approve item 6.1 for adopting the Fiscal Year 2013-14 Operating Budget.
And I second.
Authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Authority member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, Request Authorization to Enter into Agreement for Professional Services with Moore La Cofano-Goltzman, Inc., DBA-MIG, or MIG, to perform an update of the city, the city's American with Disabilities Act, ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan.
Mayor and the City Council, Ms. Kathleen Klick will be presenting the staff report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, I'd like to show before you the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Update. It is recommended tonight that the City Council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with MIG, I got the easier, easy one, to complete an update to the city's American with Disabilities Act, ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. So Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, is requires local governments to provide equal access to civic facilities, programs, and activities for individuals with disabilities. The ADA Title II requirements require a comprehensive survey of all city parks, recreation, and building facilities. You need to identify physical obstacles limiting accessibility to city-owned facilities, and then describe methods to be used to make the site accessible. Complete a schedule for achieving the compliance of the site accessibility deficiencies that are noted. The city's current plan was completed by a consultant in 2008. The plan was adopted in August of 2009. This past year, in reviewing that plan, noticed some discrepancies. The plan didn't identify the city buildings. There were some issues with some of the Title II requirements, where it covered some of the requirements, but it didn't cover all of the requirements. The city-owned facilities, the years, the obstacles weren't identified, and therefore, if they're not identified, we couldn't have a plan to correct those. So council gave us direction, staff, to authorize us funding $50,000 to update that plan. A request for proposal was issued, and then six proposals, or six proposals, requests for proposals were sent out to specialized field of consulting firms. We received one proposal back. The consultant is highly recommended. Also, the proposal cost was, was within budget. So the consultant proposal for Phase 1 is to the initiation of the project, ADA self-evaluation, facility evaluations and reports, that'd be all of our city-owned facilities and our parks, conduct facility prioritization workshop, and that would be with the public as well, ADA transition plan, public writeaways, and then Phase 2 of their proposal is to pair, prepare an ADA transition plan update, ongoing project management, and then to finally make a presentation to council with that plan. In their plan, they added a couple of options. These were options that we did not ask for in the proposal, but they did offer them, so I wanted to share them with the council tonight. Option Task A was to evaluate all public sidewalks, crosswalks, curb ramps, and rail crossings. The current plan contains, our current plan contains some assessments of roads. Main roads such as Morrel, Roselle, Terminal, and Calendar have been assessed, and we do have that data in our current plan. The option would help the city to identify additional areas where there's ADA noncompliance. It'd allow us to plan for it and to also to budget for those improvements. The cost for that additional service is $9,340. The section, the second option is a two-part training workshop for city staff, and basically, it would help city staff to understand what the policy is for ADA, how to follow the transition plan, and the cost for that additional service is $3,480. So staff talked, and we would like to bring the two options back to the City Council for consideration at the 2014-2015 mid-year budget review. At that time, we would give you some more information and some more data, but to better make the decision whether we wanted to add those two options to this plan. Tonight is just the proposal that was, the initial proposal that we sent out with the funding that was approved for 50,000. I just wanted to share the other two options so that you're aware of them, and just to keep them, so that when mid-year comes around, you're aware of those two options that we would like to present. So tonight's recommendation was, this was identified in the three-year goal, improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities under the city's strategic plan, is to update the ADA transition plan and present to the City Council for action. So tonight is recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional service with MIG to complete an update to the city's American with Disabilities Act, ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. And I'm available for any questions or comments.
Any questions, comments at this time? Open it up for the public.
I have a question. Does the city have a building inspector now? Do we have a city inspector for properties?
In our public hearings, sir, just to let you know, we do not discuss, you present what you want, and then we'll answer it after our public comment.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious if this is redundant. If we have somebody that's a building inspector or an inspector right now who's already familiar with these rules, it would seem redundant to pay another 50,000 or 60,000 to have somebody else come in and make recommendations that somebody that's already on the, on our payroll could do. Just asking. So you don't know, or you're not?
At the end of public input, then we respond.
Okay, thank you.
Any further public comment? Bring it back to the council.
Yes, Mayor and the City Council, you know, it's always a good question to ask whether or not a member of the current staff can do work that we're hiring a consultant to do, and that's, that's a good question. The dilemma with this particular issue is that it is very complex, and as we also know that the laws are changing, we're seeing this as a big issue with lawsuits as well. In addition to that, we do have a building inspector on staff, however, he has not completed the existing, the training that's necessary to be able to provide these kind of recommendations. In addition to that, we are at a staff capacity level where we do not have the, the time available to devote to doing a study that needs to be able to stand up under legal and public scrutiny. And so it really is important to bring somebody in for a short-term assignment that is expertise, has an expertise in this area, and is familiar with all the ins and outs of the law. And so in this particular case, we are recommending that we hire a specialized consultant to do the work.
I do know how, how maxed out your staff is. They, if you give them something else, something will have to give. There are solutions, but we don't have the funding to hire full-time people. My question is, why not take the entire pack, see if you can negotiate the entire package, a little less than the 62.7 that they would offer at one time, instead of coming back piecemeal in it?
We can, we can certainly ask the consultant if they would give us a package deal, if they there. I think Kathleen can speak to the negotiations in more detail. And by the way, for those who don't know, Kathleen Klick is our Planning Development Services Administrative Manager. But with that, she might speak to where the consultant might work on that.
At the time, when the options, when we wanted to look at those options, we could negotiate those. We've already negotiated, the actual proposal came in higher, and we worked with that consultant to bring it down to the 50,000 that had already been budgeted. So we didn't want to come to you and have to ask for additional funds, which were already budgeted. So our idea was to come back at mid-year with the other two options, talk with the consultant, and see if we could work out, you know, various rates. But I did not talk with the consultant about taking this option with A and B, so.
This has been a priority of mine, and I believe the entire council for the, for quite some time, and that process needs to be expedited.
I have a question. The consultant proposal, that includes, you said, facility evaluations, so is that both external and internal facilities, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you said parks, and not just our buildings here, but other city buildings too, like the community center?
Yes, all city-owned buildings, community center, scout hall. There was a list that the director of Parks and Recreation had given me, so we had a thorough list of all of the facilities.
Thank you.
I have a question. With the way the climate is right now with the ADA, a lot of legal suits are going on. I sort of agree with what the mayor said, that maybe we ought to look at the other two options, because we want everything to be up to ADA standards, so that it serves the ADA handicapped people correctly.
Right.
But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're legal in all aspects to hopefully avoid some of these frivolous lawsuits that seem to be going on around the area.
Right.
So if we're going to do it, I know it's a bit more money, but there's some extra protection in there possibly from litigation, and maybe we should consider it.
I'll make a comment that that won't prevent litigation, that'll give you a plan to do the completion. For example, if we wanted to do ADA compliant on playgrounds, you would have to have a playground that is compliant to people with, persons with disabilities and normal children without disabilities, children without disabilities at the same time without hindrance. And those are very expensive. I'm trying to build one for under 2 million, and I still haven't gotten there.
Yes. Also, just to let you know, all construction projects that we're doing within the city of Riverbank, we are updating, just like on Morrel. of Riverbank, we are updating, just like on Morel Road, will be starting shortly and we're updating the curbs and the ADA access. So, that is something with, when you're using federal funds, you need to do an assessment of your ADA. So, as we overlay roads, it's not required with slurry seals, but anytime you're digging in and doing any type of construction, it is required that you look at the ADA in that area and update it.
May I just add a comment in here? Putting litigation aside, ADA is important. It's important to our city. It's important to our individuals that deal day in and day out with accessibility. And I think it's something that we really need to take seriously and move forward with it.
Yes, and we will be inviting the community and members of the community to the workshops that we do have to get their input and to make sure that the plan meets the needs of the community.
But with that being said, we have at least one recommendation and if we want to go with them all, would that expedite? If we accepted all proposals, options A and B, would that expedite the conclusion?
Yes.
Without taking a pay cut, would we be able to afford that?
I do believe that we will make the adjustment at mid-year, but what I would need this evening is supplemental authorization to expend the funds and then we can come back with a budget amendment either at mid-year or in between now and then. But I think we're okay based on what our revenue numbers are looking at, what we're looking at.
So, I guess we have no options. Do I have a recommendation?
Isn't one of our options is to not select the options? I guess I'm confused because we have a...
No, no, they're not giving us the option to accept the options.
But you can, you can. The staff's recommendation was just to go with the initial study and then come back for the supplemental services. So, if it's the council's desire to approve the initial base option with the supplemental services as well, we can certainly do that and adjust the budget accordingly.
I'll make a recommendation. I make a recommendation that we go with this plan, including the additional options of option A and B. A second.
We have a motion to approve item 6.2, including supplemental A and B for an additional $12,700 and plus dollars and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.3, thank you. Item 6.3, status report and update on the progress of the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. John Anderson, again, our consultant community development director, he'll be presenting an overview and update of the work being done on the downtown specific plan. You'll be seeing a lot of development services for the remainder of the meeting.
Gladly, Mayor and members of the council, John Anderson, Community Development Director. I was hoping the mayor would take a break after two and a half hours. But okay, so we're going to go into this item. It's a workshop, Downtown Specific Plan. It's been something that the city's been working on since 2007. It's very much a very important part of the Community Development Department's workload. We've been working diligently to get through this effort. We have conducted three workshops with the public. One, first workshop was July 15th, second was August 19th and then again in September 16th. Those workshops were well-noticed, well-attended. I think at one time we spent, sent over 900 notices twice, both in English and in Spanish to all the affected property owners. So, everybody in the community is aware of it or should at least be aware of it, I would hope by now. We have some additional work to do. I've got a short slide presentation I'm going to go through and a couple of discussion points. First is that probably the most significant is the boundary itself. There's been a lot of discussion about what needs to be included, what doesn't need to be included. And what staff and the planning, with the planning commission's help have decided on is the boundary that we're presenting to you tonight, which includes the SR 108 corridor from the city's eastern entrance and then right over towards the new Burger King that just got remodeled at the other end of Patterson and Calendar. But anyway, we're cutting out some of the neighborhood areas that are easterly of Fourth. We feel that's inappropriate to include those as well as Cordoza Middle School. So, pretty much the core is the downtown area, the cannery property for reuse and of course, the properties that front and have long-term development options along the SR 108 corridor. The next very important part is the mapping and the mapping is illustrated, which talks about districts. Districts are defined by color and also by name. The blue is the highway district. The kind of mauve is the downtown general. Mixed use is kind of the tan and then the really yellow, I guess, would be, would be the downtown neighborhood. So, your downtown core area is the red, which is, you know, the central area. Chris Ritchie talked about, you know, all the work that's been done in the downtown core area. So, Santa Fe and Third, that's pretty much your downtown core area. So, that's your land use map that we're working with. Fortunately or unfortunately, there's 83 properties whose general plan change will need, excuse me, whose general plan land use designation will need to change to conform to this land use strategy presented in the specific plan. So, the next map illustration that I'm presenting to you tonight are the properties that are affected. This shows their current general plan land use designation. There's a lot of properties, for example, along Topeka that have a general plan designation of high-density residential, which is a very high residential designation, which is customarily to, let's say, apartments, so to speak. And a lot of these properties are zoned R2. So, what we're suggesting to be consistent with what we're illustrating in the downtown specific plan is that these would go back to a medium-density residential designation as an example. The properties along SR 108 would go to a mixed-use condition, which would allow for the Catholic Church as an example and of course, expansion of that use on that site as well as other commercial opportunities along SR 108 at the eastern end. Once you know what zone you're in or district, then you have a set of land use categories and characteristics that you would need to follow that talk about building height, the types of land uses, the type of structure that would be allowed, setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. And that's contained in a table. This is pretty much the same table that was developed as part of the '07 effort with a few modifications to the types of uses that would be allowed in each one of the districts. So, we're close to getting that finalized as well. And of course, this document will be the guiding document and we won't be relying on our zoning ordinance, which we've already described as been around since 1967. So, this brings us to another very critical point and that is, what do we do with the connection, the inner tie between the investment made in the downtown Riverbank area and what could be the new redevelopment area in the cannery site, which is on the west side of the BNSF mainline? The original approach was to install or suggest to be installed a vehicular and pedestrian connection along the Santa Fe alignment underneath the BNSF mainline, which would connect new development in the cannery site to the new development in the downtown Riverbank core area. This capital improvement back in '07 was estimated to cost about $4.5 million. The city of Merced has completed a similar project and that project has cost $8 million. So, we have suggested in our nexus analysis that if we're to proceed with this type of capital project, that we need to budget for about an $8 million effort. Now, I can tell you, after talking with our traffic expert, Katie Anderson, traffic consultant, another, yet another Anderson, part of Team Anderson, who was the traffic consultant that was hired by the city to do the environmental evaluation that we've already certified as part of the downtown specific plan. And the question that I've asked Ken Anderson is, is this an absolutely necessary, critical connection for vehicle passage, you know, at Santa Fe? Or can we rely on the other connections that we have east-west, including SR 108 and Patterson Road? His comment was, it's not necessary for traffic flow. So, we're not going to adversely impact any of our other traffic network if we do not put a vehicular access point underneath Santa Fe. So, again, sticking with the principles of the original plan and providing some type of connectivity between the cannery site and the downtown area, I thought maybe there's other alternatives that we might consider. This is an alternative that's very close to the city of Riverbank and was recently installed by a cooperative effort between the city of Modesto and the Sylvan Unified School District. And this is a pedestrian-only crossing over Sylvan Avenue right at Enoch's High School entrance. I just confirmed today that the city and Sylvan School District combined, Sylvan, sorry, I think Modesto City Schools rather, sorry. Modesto City Schools and the city of Modesto combined spent $2.1 million on this pedestrian overpass that meets ADA standards. So, this isn't the perfect example. It's a close example. It's something that's real. It's something we can touch. It's something we can look at and something we currently have, you know, a number that represents what, you know, what we could do as an alternative to a full-fledged vehicular access underneath the BNSF mainline. So, as part of the policy direction in this plan, the planning commission will be looking at both of these alternatives. I think it's appropriate for them to look at both of these alternatives. And then ultimately, the city council will be making a decision what we do with this connectivity between the cannery site and the downtown Riverbank area.
Mr. Anderson, at this point, the bridge, pedestrian bridge over that area is not as tall as it should be for the rail.
Correct.
Is it the same expanse?
No, it's, this is actually a wider expanse. So, there are some differences. There are some differences, but the idea is to present, you know, another concept, another alternative that the city certainly could consider and still provide the type of connectivity that the original authors of this plan felt was very important and critical to promote downtown commercial growth and activity. The other, go ahead, go ahead.
I wasn't sure if it was question time, thank you.
Ask questions any time.
This doesn't address though, the concern that's been expressed a number of times about emergency vehicle response times.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I've had a chance to talk with both the emergency services, the police and fire. And interesting enough, the real concern, access east to west, isn't necessarily between the viaduct on SR 108 and Patterson. It's really between Patterson and Clarabelle. Between Patterson and Clarabelle moving east to west is a significant distance. Actually, it's over, I think it's over a mile where you don't have the ability to go east-west. And theoretically, if you had something happening, you know, on the east or the west side between those two roadway segments, you have to go around. There's no, there's no connection. You know, we have the viaduct. Empire doesn't have the viaduct. You know, they, a train car stops on the tracks there and you literally, you know, get stopped and you have no ability to get around it. We have the viaduct. If we didn't have the viaduct, I think it'd be a critical, critical path issue. So, I don't think it's, I don't think police and fire, it's as critical as it is for, as it is as a planning tool to promote connectivity between what could be a reuse of an old cannery site and the capital investment the city has made in the downtown commercial core.
Thank you.
Plus, BNSF would have problems with two access points or two, you know, maintaining the Patterson Road one access if you have a tunnel underneath.
John, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since you mentioned the alternate there at Sylvan. And are you going to look as well at, as a walking transportation, possibly say, motorcycles being able to go over this route also?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the way it's designed, it could be, it could be, well, it isn't designed. I mean, the idea concept is it's ped, so it could be, you know, it's wheelchair accessible, so it's, you know, for walking and/or biking. Dr. Zinner made a very important point at the planning commission level when this was discussed, that you'd be very careful with the ultimate design because what you're talking about doing is constructing this type of facility right next to the skate park. So, you might imagine that you would have skateboard enthusiasts perhaps using this as a ramp that they could, you know, accelerate at a high rate of speed into somewhere, skate park, Santa Fe, into cannery site, you know, along that corridor. So, it's definitely a design-related consideration and quite frankly, quite frankly, what we suggested here is an overpass, but it might be an underpass. I think it really gets down to, you know, dollars and cents and what it is we're trying to achieve from policy direction as to what is the most economically feasible alternative to make that connection? Do we set aside and plan long-term for an underpass, which in today's dollars is a minimum of $8 million? Or do we look at something that might be more doable long-term and promote connectivity through pedestrian connection? So, that's, that's kind of the concept. Couple of other issues unless there are any more questions, sorry.
No comment though.
Okay.
I like the fact that if we do go with something like this pedestrian walkway, that it is enclosed so that we don't have anybody thinking, you know, for safety reasons that they can jump off and have fun.
Well, I think that's, that's a critical design, critical design component as well.
Might I add in here though, this, this overpass, it doesn't necessarily take care of the issue of pedestrians actually crossing the road and it is an issue at that site. And so, I'm wondering, I mean, if that's really what the intention is to have that kind of overpass going over the train tracks, you're not going to completely cut off pedestrians still crossing the train tracks.
Well, I think, you know, there's going to have to be some fencing. I mean, there's, there's going to be, have to be fencing in that right-of-way to preclude it, you know? And it's going to have to be fencing that you don't have to worry about relative to graffiti. So, understood. One of the other issues is dealing with Patterson Road and what does Patterson Road look like? And we'll talk about that in another discussion topic tonight, but whatever we decide for Patterson Road, we'll need to get folded into the final draft Downtown Specific Plan. So, because it is the southern edge to this planning area and it is, absolutely is critical. I think that's pretty much it. I think what the council probably is interested in is where do we go from here? We're receiving, we're anticipating to receive written and/or verbal comments from Sun Garden Ganji folks who have had, this is the second version of the electronic document in their possession for comments. So, I'm hoping to get some electronic comments back from them. I still have to set aside and reserve some time, quite frankly, for final edits so I can publish a final document. So, that final document can be put on the city's website. So, folks in, in the community and that are interested parties have a chance to look at what I'm calling the final document and provide comments on that. And then I think what I'm going to do rather than, you know, keep going through this is just develop a rat-a-sheet. After I release that final document, then we'll go through a rat-a-sheet for final, final changes. I'm hoping to get to the planning commission. I mean, I think I'm optimistic that I can get there by October, but I think realistically, it may not happen until November because I've just got to give the public that much advance notice, you know, of this document because I'm not trying to rush it, trying to make sure that it's finished and final. I think we've come a long ways. I think a lot of the language relative to RDA now has been eliminated. And there's more information in the document relative to implementation, potential future changes. And obviously, we're going to need to address some additional land use related issues in the downtown core area that we're a little bit sensitive to. So, so all that being said, get to final decision to you folks, to the city council in December of this year. So, that's not what, not what city manager wants to hear, but I think that's the realistic trend based on what I've been and where I'm, the effort on this.
Mr. Anderson knows that I have been pushing hard.
Mr. Anderson knows that I've, I have been pushing hard to get this, this document done. The important thing, though, is that it's done right. And a lot has changed since this was originally considered back in 2007. And we, the whole world economy has changed. Redevelopment has gone away. We have a different perspective on, on development and some of the, the economic constraints that the city has. So, I, I think that we've also been very responsive to the, the questions from the public about wanting to have more review, more public review. We've been able to document that and, and go forward. So, I'm optimistic that while it has taken longer than any of us would have liked, that by the time we get done with this document, that, that will, will be very usable and reflective of today's realities. I think that discussion and policy decision that will ultimately be before the council, whether we do a pedestrian overpass, that hopefully will be attractive. And in my vision, it's a very attractive facility that will draw people to take a view of the valley compared to an underpass that, that may or may not happen in our lifetime, may not be doable, and may actually inhibit development in the downtown area, specifically at the Cannery site, and may have unintended consequences in our existing downtown. So, I think that there's, those are things we wanted to just preliminary, highlight for you this evening, kind of as a, as a little preview. Planning Commission will be considering this again at its next meeting as well. And I do want to compliment Mr. Anderson on, on the work that he's been doing. This is one of many projects that he's been doing as our consultant.
Just have a quick comment on, no, question on all the projects relating to the planning and the fees. Can we have it done by the end of Janu- January, everything? Or we, is that impossible?
What is everything?
Everything?
Everything on my department list, which is over six pages long? Everything? I don't think that's going to happen.
We will focus at the strategic planning session, we'll focus.
How about by the time I'm out of here?
That's a loaded, that's a loaded question, man.
Mayor, may we take it one project at a time, please?
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public meeting. Any comments on item 6.3? Seeing none, I bring it back to the City Council on item 6.3. We are.
I just have a comment before we go any further, if I can. Yeah, my comment, I just, John, thank you for your time and, and efforts and all this. And I just want to just throw one thing out there for us to consider in all this, that, and the old adage that cheaper isn't always better. And I think I have some concerns myself with the overpass. And, and I fully understand all of the, the ramifications of not having it versus having it. But I think we need to just keep that in mind, that sometimes going with something that is less expensive and meet some of our needs may not always be the best for us in our long, long-range goals. And I think we really need to kind of think about that, especially for policy setters, when we're looking at the future. Policies that we make and set right now affect futures that, you know, are down the line. And I think we need to consider some of that, too. And I just want to, I just want to be mindful of that. I'm not saying, no, you know, throw it out back to the drawing board. That's not what I'm saying here. I just think we need to really be mindful of having good quality things. And if, and, and for time on down the road, you know, we're dealing with, with something that looks aesthetically better than others, we might need to consider some of those things. And so, I just want to kind of throw that out there for the council to think about. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 6.4 and 5 and 6. I would like to, at this time, since we have several hours in closed session, is to conclude, to open the public session and allow the public to comment on item 6.4, 5, and 6 before we conclude and go into closed session. Is there any objections to that? Is there concurrence with that? Legal, is there any problem with that? Okay, at this time, I'd open to the public for any comments on item 6.4. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, to replace it in its entirety, Section 5, City of Riverbank Design Standard Waters, and Section 6, City of Riverbank Design Standards Wastewater of the City of Riverbank Standard specification with new specification in drawings. Item 6.5, recommend City Council review and provide feedback on the Patterson Road concept plan. And item 6.6, recommend City Council receive a presentation on the status of the NEXUS fee study. Seeing no comments from the public, I bring it back. Any comments from the council? Seeing none, I move to item 7, 7.1, staff comments.
Mayor, Mr. City Council, the staff comments this evening just relate to the special meetings that are scheduled. This Thursday, September 25th, we'll be reviewing the city's financial, an assessment of the city's financial condition and forecasting. That will start at 6 o'clock in these chambers. We also have a strategic planning session scheduled for Tuesday, September 30th, starting at 8:30 a.m. at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. That will begin at 8:30, and we anticipate that that will go most of the day. That concludes staff comments this evening.
Item 7.2, council comments. Councilmember Jones Cruz, please.
I just have one council, council, I'm sorry, I have one comment. And Ms. Timponi made reference to it earlier this evening when she talked about River Cove and the River Cove folks. They have a, they have a real concern down there. We've heard it. We've addressed some of their issues through Parks and Rec, and I know the sheriff's department's worked on it. She was making reference to a recent California League of Cities where I was fact-finding and talking to other cities that have similar issues with parking and access to waterfront beaches especially. And I shared some of those things with them, and they were very attuned to that. And so, I think us as a council really need to, really need to take some action here. And I am planning on bringing this particular item to our strategic planning so that we can get that on there. I think we need to look at some options for those folks down there and move forward with a little more intensive situation, some strategies for them, and some things that we need to bring to them. I don't really want to go into a lot of specifics. We have quite a few more agenda items. And I think a better opportunity would be that, to bring that to the strategic planning. So, that's what I will do. Thank you.
Councilmember Bob Martinis.
A couple items tonight. Just reminder that the last day to vote is on October the 20th. And, to register, I'm sorry, to vote. Register, register, to vote, October 20th. And I'm very pleased that the Riverbank Unified School District and our other Crosswood Elementary, city officials and parents will be participating in our Walk the School Day. And this day is a reminder of awareness for safety for our students that are walking and biking to and from school and parents that drive in the school zone areas. Thank you.
Councilmember Tucker.
I have nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
I'd like to take a moment and personally thank Kathleen Gleek and Laura Raybill and Peter Lelumis, who, of our Developmental Book Department, for coming in about $400,000 under with the Morale Project. It was good planning on their part. And secondly, and lastly, I want to thank the community for the support they showed to Christian food sharing at their spaghetti dinner on Saturday night. They had a terrific turnout, and the organization truly needed it because of the expenses they've incurred.
I have no comment. Closed session, consistent of LRA 8.1 Conference with Real Property Negotiators, Government Code Section 54956.8, Property APN Number 062-031-007, Agency Negotiator Jill Anderson, City Manager, Property Negotiator U.S. Army, under negotiation price term and payment or both. LRA Item 8.2 Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant of Subdivision B of Government Code 54956.9, One Potential Case. Item 8.3 Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, Agency Representative Jill Anderson, City Manager, Employees Organization Riverbank Miscellaneous, Employees Riverbank Mid-Management Bargaining Unit, Riverbank Executive Management. Items 8.4 Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Exposure, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Subdivision Bravo of Government Code 54956.9, One Potential Case. Item 8.5 Pursuant, correction, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of Case Adrian Allen and Frances Allen versus City of Riverbank, Stanislaus County Superior Court, and Case Number 670739. With that, we go into closed session.
Thank you all. You're welcome to come back in two hours and listen to the report out.